Good evening and welcome, everyone, to the August 21st, 2024 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, the Chair. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and an Act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on August 21st, 2024, at 5:30 PM. The public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternate public access provided on the notice of meeting available on the town website. I will begin by taking a roll call. Susan Britta.
Present.
Willow Rubenstein.
Here.
Jim Saban.
Here.
Peter Slovac.
Ken Smith.
Here.
Joanne Crowley, present. Seeing that we have a quorum, I can now call the meeting to order, and I would ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. I have one item that's not on the agenda, and unfortunately, it's a sad one. I'd like to make some comments with regard to the passing of our Chairman of the Select Board, Michael Stone, who I considered a good friend and a friend of the Planning Board. The town of Yarmouth has lost a true friend with the passing last week of Michael Stone, Chair of the Select Board, on August 13th, 2024. Chairman Stone, a longtime resident of Yarmouth, was a committed public servant, and he left behind a legacy of dedication and service that has profoundly affected the town. And any of us who have been public servants, and many of us are, know how important that is, and his contributions were remarkable. His dedication to public service over four decades was second to none. I personally had the great privilege of working with him as the Chair of this Board and as he was Chair of the Select Board over the years. And I remain grateful for his support for all of our projects that came before the Board that were sometimes very difficult and controversial. He seemed to always be on our side. The Planning Board, and me, and the town will miss you dearly, Mike. Chairman Stone. So now I'd like to move on. And we have some guests tonight. I'm very happy to see the Executive Director, Kristi Senatore, is here from the Cape Cod Commission Mission. Thank you for joining us. And you're going to present the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for us, so I'd welcome you to come up and... Fire away!
Perfect, thank you. And I'm also joined by Erin Perry. She's our Deputy Director.
Nice to meet both of you again.
Let's see, hopefully, can you hear me okay? Okay, great. Well, first of all, thank you so much for inviting us here this evening. We know you have a lengthy agenda, but we appreciate that you're recognizing the importance of the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that we recently updated. So, we are the Regional Planning Agency, obviously, for the Cape, and a lot of the work that we do is centered around economic development and making sure that we're focusing on the correct elements of the Cape's economy. And so we've recently updated the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for Cape Cod. So what is the SEDS? And we kind of refer to it as that acronym, the SEDS. It's a five-year strategic plan for economic development on the Cape, and it sets out an action plan with priority projects that will move our economy towards a sustainable future. So that's kind of a really short statement about what the SEDS is. There are many areas across the country in the Commonwealth that have economic development strategies, and we're pleased that we do have a SEDS on the Cape. So a SEDS is really something that's a requirement for the Federal Economic Development Administration to maintaining this designation that we have that's called an Economic Development District. And so we have this designation. Not all of the Cape is necessarily eligible for that designation based on census data and information, but we applied and were granted this designation as an entire region a few years back. And so now we have the opportunity to apply for EDA funding that can be beneficial to the entire region. As I said, we've had a SEDS for some time. Our first SEDS was developed back in 2009. We've had SEDS that have been updated about every five or so years. Since then, you can see that timeframe in the middle there was when we applied for and received that designation as an Economic Development District, now providing that eligibility for different grant opportunities. The most recent SEDS that was developed was in 2019. A lot has happened in the last five years, so it was really a good opportunity for us to take a look at the region comprehensively and understand the economy that we're living in currently. So, there are some components that are required by the Federal Economic Development Administration. We have an economic condition summary, so I'll go into some of that data today, but not all of it. We've done an in-depth opportunities analysis. An action plan has been developed, an evaluation framework. And then throughout the plan is really a focus on economic resilience, and these are all required by the Federal Economic Development Administration. So all of the SEDS is online. It's available on our website. We also really took a hard look at the data site that we have, datacapecod.org, and really kind of focused the plan around a lot of those major issue areas. So we really look at the Cape in terms of the people, the place that makes up our region, and then the economy. So really focusing those goals and objectives that you'll see in just a few moments around those major kind of buckets, if you will. Let's see. There we go. So, I'm not going to go through it. It's a fairly lengthy document, but I'm just going to, we're going to go through some of the highlights today, and then we can answer some of your questions. But we really talk about the Cape. That's a special place. Obviously, we talk a little bit about the character of the region, the history of the area, with a focus on really what's happened over the course of the last several years. If we look at it in terms of those buckets of the people, places, and the economy, we spend a lot of time talking about who makes up the region. If we look at the population, you can see that significant population growth that we had happen from the '70s up through today. This is the most recent census data. We're looking at about 229,000 people here in the region on a year-round basis. We know those numbers significantly increase in the summer. But we've also seen a significant influx of that pink line that you see on the bottom is the percentage of our population that's age 65 and over. So you can see in the 1970s, that was about 17%. About 2020, we're now about a third of our population is age 65 and over. Not surprising. I think these are all, this is all information that we know, but this really helps us to focus on how we want to really address our economy. And then if we look at the Cape in terms of the place, obviously, we live in this very unique area, unique geographically, but we also have over 500 miles of coastline. We know that we're being challenged by climate change and coastal resiliency issues. We have coastal embainments that are being impacted, over 890 freshwater lakes and ponds. And so while we're not talking about it tonight, we do have a freshwater initiative that's been the focus of ours for the course of the past year, really taking a look at the impacts that we're seeing to our freshwater quality as well. And then, of course, we've been very good at protecting open space across the region. So while we're developed in the many areas, we've also been very good at protecting a lot of the land that we would like to maintain here in the region. And then if we look at the economy, obviously, we're looking at some of our top industries here. If you look at monthly employment, our top industries really are accommodations and food services, healthcare, social assistance, retail trade. Those tend to make up some of those top employment numbers. And then on the right side, you'll see that column. We're seeing those increase in jobs over the last five or so years. Construction and professional and technical services making up the bulk of the increase that we're seeing in jobs. So this is not meant to be comprehensive or inclusive, but certainly just a very brief snapshot of some of the data that we included to really kind of provide an overview of the Cape's economy. We have been working very closely, not only with our staff, but with the Cape Cod Barstool County Economic Development Council. So that's an organization that we staff, and they are responsible for the implementation and the development of the SEDS. So we've been working comprehensively with that board to really develop the plan that you'll, that you see before you. But it really is a context-sensitive plan. And because we are the Regional Planning Agency, we have the benefit of also the development of a regional policy plan, a climate action plan, a transportation plan, a coastal resiliency plan, a wastewater plan. So we have all these other plans that we can draw from to really start to make sure that the Economic Development Strategy is reflective of the goals and objectives within each of those plans as well. So making sure that they're integrated was important. And so now we're going to get into a little bit more of what's contained within the plan. And so we spent some time reviewing and developing a vision and goals and objectives to accompany the plan. So Erin's going to walk through the process that we use to develop the vision and goals and get into some of the detail around the evaluation framework.
Thank you. So just to give you a quick overview of the vision and goals, as Kristi said, we worked very closely with the Barstool County Economic Development Council to do that opportunities analysis, to work with them to identify our strengths, challenges, opportunities across the region. And all of that went into developing this vision statement. Along with several other stakeholder meetings, we held an economic summit in March where many people came to provide us feedback on a draft vision and draft goals. And we worked with several focus groups over the course of the planning process to arrive at what you're about to see today. And so the vision for this SEDS, the vision for economic development across the region is for a strong and vibrant Cape Cod. It's a region that supports a resilient, inclusive, and diverse year-round community with access to those kind of services and amenities that that year-round community needs. So housing and transportation, education, employment. And it envisions a region with strong and thriving natural resources because we know that is really what makes Cape Cod unique. And so that is a very important part of the SEDS and maybe something that people don't typically consider as kind of part of our economic strategy. But as far as I think we are concerned, the stakeholders are concerned, and EDA as well, that that is really critical to our identity. And so we've identified six goals, again, within those buckets, kind of categories that Kristi already identified, people, places, and economy. And I'm going to touch on them just briefly. We have a goal associated with each of the six categories you see here, as well as a series of objectives that really will kind of guide implementation of the action plan. These are the things that we're trying to achieve. We know that this action plan will be critical to that, but we know there are many other things that communities are doing that will help us to achieve these goals as well. So, housing attainability. I know that you all are very aware of the housing challenges we have across Cape Cod. Within the people, you know, housing attainability is a critical goal to support our economy. Without an adequate supply of year-round rental and ownership housing, we struggle to provide the housing needed to support not only our year-round residents, but most importantly, the workforce that we need to support that vibrant year-round economy. Under community, we know we have a strong and vibrant year-round community, but we have opportunities to strengthen that. And so a goal here of the Economic Development Strategy is really to kind of strengthen that sense of community in part by protecting and enhancing our historic assets, our existing cultural resources, but also by fostering more civic engagement across all 15 towns and the region. Under places, it's really two goals, infrastructure and natural resources. Infrastructure is incredibly important to fostering and supporting the year-round economy. It's not only kind of the, you know, transportation kind of related infrastructure, you know, that allows for adequate access to and from the region throughout the region. It's our broadband infrastructure, ensuring that those here on Cape Cod have adequate access to, you know, the internet, that those underserved are served in the future, and that, you know, that those who are served today have access to perhaps multiple providers of that service. It also, you know, ties into protection of our natural resources. You all are, you know, certainly doing a lot of that here in Yarmouth, but wastewater infrastructure and other infrastructure that, you know, protects water quality as well as impacts of, the impacts of climate change are important to this particular goal. Our natural resources, we know that we need to continue to protect and restore those resources. And again, that is a critical aspect of the work that we'll do here through the Economic Development Strategy. And finally, under economy, and again, these two goals really kind of tie together. We have a workforce development goal as well as an economic diversity and resiliency goal. We know that we have those kind of strong traditional industries that we have kind of supported and that are thriving and have been thriving here in the region for a long time. And we know that we will continue to have that important seasonal economy and that, you know, the industries that make that seasonal economy successful, we must continue to support. We must do that through kind of workforce development and appropriate training opportunities, but we also need to think about our emerging industries and where there are opportunities for innovation, where we can really foster industries that can help us address our critical challenges. And again, that ties back into workforce development and ensuring that we have the programs and resources to train people to fill those jobs in emerging industries. And so finally, you know, the kind of, you know, this all culminates in an action plan, which is really kind of key to the Economic Development Strategy. And so we worked with stakeholders and the Economic Development Council to identify a series of key actions that could really help to support and achieve those goals in the coming five years. And so specifically, this action plan, it's not intended to be a long list of projects that we all hope to achieve in those five years, but it's supposed to be, according to EDA, kind of some of those targeted actions that we can achieve over the next five years, we can make some progress on, and that will really impact kind of all communities across the Cape. And so we have, you know, identified 10 key kind of strategic and impactful actions that we will be working kind of to prioritize over the next five years along with stakeholders across the Cape. And the key actions that are identified, they address multiple goals, so they're not all geared toward one particular goal, or they're typically kind of cross-cutting actions. And the action plan identifies some of the key entities or stakeholders that will really need to advance these over the coming five years or in many cases are already working to advance these. And so I'll kind of run through them quickly. I won't go into great detail, though. Certainly, I'm happy to answer some questions if you have them. But really, there's several that tie to housing. So we know we need to incentivize year-round housing. We also need to think about ways that we can simplify appropriate housing development and redevelopment in areas that are appropriate for a community. That will help us to, again, tying back to that housing attainability goal, provide appropriate housing for our year-round residents, the workforce that we need to support our economy. Providing opportunities for organizations and entrepreneurs to pilot ideas. We have a strong community of small businesses and local entrepreneurs. And that sometimes that barrier to kind of entry is difficult. And so identifying opportunities, whether it's through existing programs that provide support and technical assistance or whether it's partnering with other organizations or entities that perhaps could provide, you know, some space for a short period of time for people to pilot ideas without having them to, having, without them having to provide kind of that upfront cost for space. Supporting year-round community activity and civic engagement. Again, we know we have a strong year-round, year-round population. Identifying opportunities to make that year-round population aware of opportunities to get more involved, whether it's in municipal government or other volunteer opportunities, and really making sure that they are part of the community. Developing and connecting students and workforce to educational and training opportunities. And again, this ties into the next one a bit, identifying and supporting the growing industries in the region. We really need to be sure that the workforce training opportunities, and while there are many here that exist through the educational institutions that we need to continue to foster and we hope will continue to thrive. You know, we really need to also identify those emerging industries and create new programs and kind of continuously evaluate those programs and ensure they're meeting the needs of the region and the region's businesses. Investing in water quality and wastewater infrastructure. This is certainly not new to anyone in this room. And, you know, Yarmouth is even highlighted as an example in the SEDS, an example of that coordinated local and regional planning and an example of a community that is advancing wastewater infrastructure for both the purposes of natural resource protection and economic development purposes. And so we need to continue to invest that, invest in that infrastructure, and that's critical to being able to continue to promote economic development opportunities across the Cape. Similarly, we know we need to invest in other infrastructure. That's broadband infrastructure. We have done a lot of work over the past year or so to identify gaps and potential opportunities to support broadband infrastructure across the region. And that's something that needs to continue. We need to ensure that our underserved communities and populations are served by that infrastructure moving forward. And then also tying into kind of infrastructure is the replacement of the canal bridges, which I think probably doesn't need a lot of further discussion. We know that we have seen some success recently in obtaining funding for the Sagamore Bridge, but we need to continue to work toward also advancing efforts around the Bourne Bridge. We really do need two new, two new bridges. And then finally, supporting climate change resiliency. And what is articulated within this action is both kind of doing the planning work that we know will be critical and identifying and developing local climate action plans and supporting those planning processes, but also using what we know and what we have to date around potential, you know, potential adaptation strategies to address some of the impacts we're seeing today, whether that's, you know, taking action on some of our low-lying roads or looking at some potential, you know, issues that we have in terms of other aspects of our built environment and advancing strategies there. And so the last piece I will just touch on here is that it is a requirement that the SEDS also include an evaluation framework. And frankly, you know, it's necessary to ensure that the plan is successful and that we know that it is having an impact on the economy and on the region as a whole. And so there are several aspects of the evaluation framework that are included in this SEDS. It's really broken down into three, kind of three pieces: qualitative indicators, macro indicators, and programmatic indicators. These are reported on annually, and it's a requirement that we report on those and provide that information to EDA. It's also really important for our own evaluation because annually, we do have an opportunity to think about whether we need to make some adjustments to the SEDS. And we can articulate those in our annual report as well. Qualitative indicators really come about a little bit more organically. And so those are, you know, there's not necessarily data associated with them, but that might be kind of describing the process, for example, or the, kind of what has happened over the course of that year, for example, to address the canal bridges. What progress have we made in terms of planning? The qualitative indicator, excuse me, the macro indicators, these are things we track regularly. We might not see significant changes from year to year, but over the course of that five-year span, we should see some trends and changes and be able to better articulate and understand whether the SEDS is having an impact. These are things like population and population diversity, changes in our housing stock or seasonality of housing. And then programmatic indicators are indicators that are tied directly to those actions, the 10 actions that I just described. And those, you know, are things that really identify how successful we've been in implementing each of those actions. And so those might be things like tracking the investments in wastewater infrastructure, is I think a good example here in Yarmouth and across the region. Or, for example, you know, tracking changes in the acres of open space that have been protected over time. So those tie back directly, again, to that, to that action plan. And I know that you do have a copy of the SEDS, but this, here is a link directly to it for anybody who would like to read it in its entirety. And then there's also a link to the website that Kristi mentioned, datacapecod.org. And that provides all of the data and information that went into the SEDS and much more.
Thank you, thank you very much, Erin. Thank you, Kristi. I'd like to just open it up for any questions or comments from our board members. Who would like to start? Anyone?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
I'll start. A couple of things. You mentioned that there was a list of priority projects. Is that included? Is that, is that an addendum to the overall report? Is that included in the report?
So the priority projects are really those 10 actions.
Oh, I see, okay. I thought it was specific, I thought it was specific projects.
You know, I will say in the past, the SEDS has, the guidance from EDA has been to include more specific projects, and the guidance today is to focus on those kind of broader impactful actions. But they are drafted and intended to be broad so that many of those local projects that would contribute to achievement of those actions and goals can be incorporated.
I will say, it's gratifying to see the emphasis on creating jobs that go with the housing so that people, the types of jobs that people can afford the housing, that we're not caught in a spiral of constantly tinkering with the real estate market to meet the financial requirements of, you know, our citizens that don't have great jobs. And that's sort of the, that's sort of what happens in the summertime. We have kids come in, they get minimum, you know, minimum, and we accommodate that by providing housing for them. But we have to think long-term about jobs for higher-paying jobs so that people can afford market rate, you know, individual homes or condos or whatever it's going to be. And so I think the two concepts have to go hand in hand. There's been a tremendous amount of emphasis recently on housing. And I'm always wondering, why aren't they talking about better jobs in addition to good housing? So this, I think, I think you've have, you've got a decent balance of, but I still am mystified. It's very difficult to try to figure out how to attract a more diversified economy on the Cape. How do you create a more, because we're so well-known as a tourist industry, a tourist economy, and it's really hard to diversify that. And what do we all have to do to get into the, and get into the arena and do that? Because that's the only way you're going to do the housing and the better jobs if we, we have to diversify the economy. And yet, overall, everyone wants to preserve what makes the Cape special, which is Cape-iness. You know, beaches and loveliness and quaint little villages and ice cream shops and all that kind of stuff. So it's a, it's a very difficult, it's a, and it's a difficult, and I don't know how you prioritize it. That's even, that's even more difficult. But it's a, it's a good framework. I think it's a good framework. The Cape Cod Commission does that kind of thing really well.
Mr. Smith?
I'll just touch on a little bit because you hit the buzzword that I was going to ask,
ask, is how do you, can you, could you bring up the 10, the 10 key indicators, right, the key actions? Like, how do you prioritize that? I mean, it's a very comprehensive list, but as you look at it and kind of building off of what Susan said is, you know, if I look at incentivized year-round housing, well, the only way you're going to get that is to get better jobs, so that people can afford more housing, as Susan just said. So, I mean, do you look at key action items on this plan and say, this is like, you know, five years goes by like that, is, okay, this is the stuff we want to try and work on and work with public and private sector? And then, tying that to, you said you had some, you know, public and private outreach and had some, you know, forums, you know, from local businesses. Help me understand what that was like and how that was done, so.
Sure. Well, I'll just briefly touch on the key actions. These aren't in any particular order because they're all priorities. And as Erin mentioned in the past, we've had expansive lists of priority projects. And so, we wanted to make sure that this was a plan that we could really address our priority projects over the next five years. And this isn't a list of things that the Cape Cod Commission's going to do, it's a list of things that we need a variety of stakeholders and organizations in public and private sector to help us work on. But we did do some extensive outreach during the process to develop the plan, so maybe Erin can touch on that. But going forward in the implementation phase, we will be working closely with the Barnstable County Economic Development Council as well as other stakeholders to make sure that there's some ownership and responsibility over the implementation of some of the key action items. So, those are definitely our next steps. We did just hear, I don't know, two weeks ago, that the plan was approved through federal EDA, which is good. So, we didn't have to make any edits, and so now, we're really kind of moving into that next phase where we can start to, you know, continue working with stakeholders to address the priority actions. But maybe you can touch just a little bit on who we've spoken to throughout the process.
Sure. So, I can touch on it kind of broadly, but maybe starting with the BCEDC. So, the BCEDC is the SED Strategy Committee, and that is what EDA requires. They require that that Strategy Committee be very well-balanced and representative of the key industries and sectors in the region. And so, that representation is really important, especially as we're developing these actions, because they're individuals who have expertise or work in any number of these areas. So, it's, it's helpful to get their perspective on what can be accomplished in that timeframe. We had the economic summit, which I mentioned briefly, where we brought, you know, local stakeholders together, but we also had input from the state. The state economic development secretary was there to talk about the state economic development priorities and how we can coordinate and collaborate at the, at the local and regional level to ensure we're making progress on these elements. But we had about 100 people attend, and that was a mix of both public sector individuals, people who serve on boards like yourselves, staff, as well as some regional representation. Many organizations that work on housing, whether it's nonprofit or the developer community, was, was present. We had some local business representation as well as several chamber, as well as the regional chambers' representation and contributions. We had, you know, those who are more engaged in natural resource protection and natural resources issues, as well as regional organizations like the Climate Change Collaborative. So, it was very broad representation, and we used all of their initial input to actually develop the action plan. We didn't go in there with kind of, you know, prescribed ideas around the specific actions. So, I think that was really helpful. But still, the action plan, I think, at that point was, there was a lot of content coming out of that meeting. So, we held a series of focus groups. I'm not going to remember all of them off the top of my head, but, you know, it related to infrastructure, both broadband, wastewater, transportation. We had a climate focus, or climate change focus group, I should say. We had more of a natural resources, open space. So, there were a series of focus groups. Workforce development was another one, where we really tried to bring in those additional perspectives to narrow what could, could actually be accomplished in the next five years.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hi.
Mr. Rubenstein.
Thank you for being here. First of all, apologies for the hat, but I just came from day camp pickup, and it's very bright outside, and my face needs less sun, not more. Just a very quick technical question. I know a lot of federal acronyms, but you have stumped me with the EDA.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you please help me? I have never heard of that organization in my entire life, and I am not a dummy. So, can you please help me?
Sure. Yeah, the Economic Development Administration.
Yeah, but where does that live in the federal government?
Commerce.
Ah, one of our most least-known departments of our federal government. Would we agree?
Secret, but important.
I got it. I just wanted to put it out there to everybody because I have never heard of this organization. And like I said, it's not my first rodeo. And so, I appreciate you putting that in some context. So, at least when people are trying to connect all the dots, they're like, "EDA? I don't know what that is." But I'm glad that we're a part of it, and I'm glad that we got approved. I'm glad that we had the questions about the key actions. I don't believe you're going to stick around for number, item number four on our agenda tonight, which is discussion of the 2024 Housing Bond Bill, aka the Affordable Homes Act. However, Madam Chair, I don't think we should pass up this opportunity to hear from the esteemed two top people at the Cape Cod Commission about their opinion on the Affordable Homes Act that was signed by the governor a couple of weeks ago, and how this does or doesn't tie in to something that we all agree is, you know, if I had to rank them, would be maybe number one, which has to do with housing. So, surprise. It's either that or make you wait another hour, and that doesn't seem fair, especially to the other people who are on the agenda. But I feel like...
I, I agree. I think, if you would, if you wouldn't mind, Kristi.
It does tie into the actual reason that they're here, Madam Chair. I'm not just, you know, coming up with weird curveballs.
Because I'll, I will share with you very candidly that this town went through an extensive, long process to get it right for the people of Yarmouth, and that just got thrown out the window.
About the ADU by law.
Oh, yeah. And, and maybe one other element of it. But that was, you know, there was a lot, there was an emotional investment in that. And we will live with it, we have to live with the new law. We'll go through it. But it would be interesting here from a, from a county-wide, a commission-wide point of view, how you think that, how do you think that's going to work? Because there's still some gray areas. We have no idea what it all, how it's going to be implemented and, and how it, how, how it can really help, you know, the first item on your list of key actions here. So, I appreciate that, Wilf, for you bringing up. So, you can, you can be as candid as you want or, or not, Kristi, but we'd appreciate your opinion.
And it probably won't be the last time you're asked this question.
No, definitely, definitely won't be. And I think it's actually really appropriate to talk about in the terms of the, in the context of the SEDs because we actually had the benefit of also developing a regional housing strategy simultaneous with the update of the SEDs. Whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, it was just a lot of work, but it actually, one informed the other and vice versa. So, it was actually really, I think, a helpful exercise for the community, for us to be able to undertake both of those, the development of both of those plans at the same time. We have been working closely with the administration and also with the delegation and seeing the different iterations of the bill moving forward. And I think there are some, you know, definite opportunities for the Cape to take advantage of some of the elements within there, within the Affordable Homes Act. I know there are elements that, you know, unfortunately, didn't make it into the final version, and there hopefully will be opportunities going forward to, to rectify some of those issues. But we're now working through our regional housing strategy and many of the components of the implementation plan for that as well. We had a meeting just this morning on different types of pre-approved plans. Part of those will include accessory dwelling units. So, there's opportunities there to now take what we're developing and hopefully make that more appropriate and user-friendly for our local communities as well. So, we look forward to continuing to have a solid coordinated relationship with the administration around housing for the Cape across the Commonwealth. I know that they are focused on the Cape. We're actually hosting our 10th Annual One Cape Summit in September 18th and 19th. We'd love to welcome as many of you to that as possible. We will have Lieutenant Governor speaking, and I'm sure that this will be one of her, the elements of her talking points that day as well. So, I don't know if there's anything I missed that you might want to add, but before, you know, without going into too much detail around certain, certain elements of that, you know, I think that there's opportunities. And we're looking, as the regional planning agency, forward to implementation of our regional housing strategy to really make sure that some of these decisions are appropriate for the Cape.
And, and, and do you think the, the fact that it's, it is now been approved is a big assist for this and your housing strategy?
I think that this is, it's a great next step, and knowing that we have these good relationships with our delegation and with the administration to really focus on the development of housing in the right places, in the right types of housing, coordinated with the appropriate workforce elements that we need, is a great next step.
Any other, any other questions?
Just one follow-up question.
Sure.
The fact that the plan has been approved, does that give you any kind of automatic access to EDA funding, or is it still project by project?
It's still project by project.
So, can you, though, apply for like some study funds or, just because the plan has been approved, can you just put in some, an application for some study funds or consulting fees? Okay.
There's different types of applications, but yes.
That was going to be one of my questions. How much funding have you received from the EDA over the years?
Good question. We receive, so it's been project-specific. We've received about $1 million to support climate action plan development and a number of efforts related to climate resiliency. One of those, for example, was the low-lying roads analysis, which I know all 15 towns participated in, but Yarmouth was certainly engaged in that effort. So, that resulted in conceptual plans for a number of low-lying roads across the region that communities now have and can, can advance. There were a number of other elements developed through that process, like the floodplain design guidelines, which I know many communities are using. We have also supported applications kind of that were more specific to a particular community. So, there's, there's kind of that. In the recent history, we've received the $1 million to support a number of climate, climate action plan elements. There's also a series of funds that are available to entities who develop and support implementation of the SEDs. And so, EDA regularly supports the efforts for us to coordinate implementation of this and help, for example, communities or entities across the region pursue funding for more specific projects that are consistent with the SEDs. I feel like I'm forgetting one funding.
There was, the Town of Bourne was able to complete wastewater infrastructure through an EDA grant. So, that was a big infrastructure project that was a really good first, I think that might have been the first EDA funds that we received after this.
Remember how much the grant was for?
Couple million?
I was going to say, I think it's 2.8, 2.8 million.
It's through you and, and then to the Town of Bourne? Or it's?
No.
It goes to the Town of, in that instance, it went to the Town of Bourne.
The fact that, that the Town of Bourne is under the umbrella of the commission is, and you had an approved plan, allowed it to apply?
Correct.
I understand. Okay.
Without, if it, if it helps clarify anything, without the plan, only about a quarter of the Cape census districts would actually be eligible based on EDA's need criteria. So, anybody, any, any community across the Cape can apply once we have an approved plan.
Yeah, that's the benefit of being a regional, the regional plan as opposed to individual city plans. That concept of regional is very important.
Mr. Saban, do you have anything?
I almost wanted to say no, but now I was going to say something, so therefore, I do have something. A lot of big bites. You know, somebody asked about priorities, and I, and I think when you really look at this, some of these need to be prioritized because without one, you can't get to the other. And, and so, I, I think there's got to be somehow a way to say, listen, we really need to concentrate on X, Y, and Z before we work at, you know, get a little into walk before you run. But these things are all big, important items. The thing that I often think about is, when we implement all this, well, what do we got? You know, what does Cape Cod look like when all this stuff happens? When we get our new bridges? When we get wastewater in the, in the Town of Yarmouth where we can now look at economic development? What is that economic development going to be? And when I look at, you know, the target industries, you know, how do those things help? Some of them, we're just going to have to deal with because that's the way they are. But I often look at, you know, we talked, this board had, as the chair said, a long, drawn-out discussion about ADUs. And one of the biggest things that I heard was the character of our community. What's it going to look like? So, I think when I started looking at all this stuff, I often wondered, what is all this going to look like? Does the, the commission have a vision of, you know, what's Cape Cod going to look like if all this stuff really, if, you know, we win the billion-dollar lottery and we can do all this stuff? What are we going to look like? So, does that?
Well, I think it ties back to the vision statement that we, that's on one of the previous slides, that really is a strong and vibrant Cape Cod. So, we need to continue to rely on our competitive advantages that make the Cape a unique place, but also really make sure to identify those new and emerging technologies and new and emerging industries that are going to evolve over the course of the next five years and certainly beyond that. This is, you know, things that we want to make sure we're at least touching over the next five years, but this is a longer-term strategy, and we have the benefit of being able to update and make some changes to the strategy over each, each year. So, things change. We had no idea what was going to happen during those COVID years, and so, we had the ability to go in and modify those plans. So, you know, I think we are just hopeful that we have a strong and vibrant economy. We've got a large group of stakeholders that are invested in making sure that the Cape remains a special place. And, you know, we look forward to working with all of the community stakeholders across the region.
I, I have a couple of specific questions. I did happen to go through the plan and looked at the, at the key action items, and I did mention this with Kathy today. I noticed under the, the first one, incentivize year-round housing, that your plan is to conduct an analysis of short-term rentals. And right now, Yarmouth is in the process of developing an RFP that we may...
We're working on a scope of services with UMass Donahue Institute to look more detailed, get the data for, for the Town of Yarmouth. I know that you guys were working on it, but it sounded like it might be a little bit longer-term get to it, and we're really interested in seeing whether we need to make any changes, whether it's a general bylaw, we, our actual zoning bylaw does have a sunset clause, so do we need to make any changes to our zoning in order to balance that need and benefits of it with any detriments that may be coming along with the short-term rentals?
So, my, my question was, what, your plans, I presume you'll try to be as inclusive as possible with all the towns, and that we would have some input as to what the scope of work might be as you go forward?
Yes, absolutely.
Because this here in Yarmouth, this, this is, at times, a critical issue. And it's also a terrific source of revenue for the town, and it's going to help us build our sewers. So, it is, it is important, and I was happy to see it in, in the plan. So, the other thing I wanted to ask, and this is a question similar to Mr. Rubenstein's, again, I, I think I'm a fairly informed public servant, but I don't know who the Barnstable Economic Development Council is, who's on it, how it's, when it was created, does Yarmouth have a rep? How does it work? Who does it report to? I, I don't know anything about this. And you've mentioned it, I counted, seven times. Sorry, Kristi, you mentioned it, Erin, seven times. How do I not know this council and who they are and what they do? So, help me.
Sure. And Erin talked a bit about the makeup of the committee itself, but it is a committee, a council of Barnstable County. They're appointed by the Barnstable County Commissioners, and they are the Strategy Committee that's been identified for, to, for the SEDs, so through the EDA. And so, they're a wide range of representatives of the community, public and private interests are represented there, and they really do, they meet monthly, and we provide that administrative and technical support to the Barnstable County Economic Development Council, so.
And it isn't necessarily a person from each town?
It's not.
No. It's more about the talents and the background and, and that kind of thing.
How big is it?
It's 14 members total, 11 voting members, and then there are three ad hoc members.
So, I guess we need to talk to our member of the Select Board, Mr. Forrest, and find out more about that.
And he's a member of the Barnstable County Economic Development Council.
So, he's, so he's, I guess, our member?
He represents the county commissioner.
Commissioners are on the council?
One, yes.
Okay. Yeah, well, see, I learned something. Okay. That's good.
And what the EDA is.
Yeah.
Multiple things to make.
I didn't know, I was going back to school.
Yeah. Anyway, any other, any other questions? Kathy, did you have anything you wanted to add at all? Yeah.
I want to thank you for, for coming out tonight, both of you. We really, we really do appreciate it. You know, we're in the midst of developing our own local comprehensive plan, and we want to help this inform us as we, as we move forward. So, we, we really, we really appreciate you coming. And I'm remiss in not, just making a notice about our representative to the commission, Dennis Prebison, I think is here. Hi, Dennis. How are you?
Hi.
Nice to see you. We're going to invite you to more meetings, if that's okay.
Well, it's okay, yeah.
And so, I wanted to just, I neglected to recognize him at the beginning, so I appreciate your time and the presentation, and we look forward to working with you on the action items.
Great, likewise, and thank you very much. And I do just want to recognize and thank Dennis Prebison. I didn't see him behind me, and now, he's been a really exemplary member of the, of the commission, so we're really happy to have him.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda this evening, potential zoning bylaw amendments to Section 405, seasonal employee housing at motels, hotels. We're going to have a discussion on amendments that have been proposed by members of the public related to seasonal employee housing in the HMOD 2 zoning district and to the definition of transient. I'd like to welcome Jane Ellen Pace, Gail Ladani, Donna Zalukas, and Nancy Barbieri, if I got all those names right.
Thank you.
To our meeting this evening and to walk us through what you've been working on. I know you've worked very closely with Kathy on this, and we'd like to go through your work and how it's been transitioned to what's an important, what we call a redlined document that we would, we would consider tonight as to how we might move it forward based on our discussions this evening with the board and how we move forward. So, I'll turn it over to you. And what I, what I would really like is to just focus on the zoning amendment itself, the changes. I, I will share with you, not to, not to limit the discussion, but we know the problem, and you have helped us learn a lot about it, particularly in your neighborhood.
Yes.
And we are very sensitive to that. We appreciate it. You've been very vocal and, and, and forward with your concerns, and you've done the work to present some changes for us. But I think the most productive way moving forward is, if we decide tonight to reach a consensus and move this forward as an amendment, we'd, we'd like to focus on the changes to the amendment that you're suggesting. So, I'll turn it over to you at this point. Thank you.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much. I'm Ellen Pace, and as you all know, all of us, my neighbors and friends here, we live right behind the Village Green Motel in South Yarmouth. And I want to start by thanking Kathy Williams for all of her excellent advice and assistance in getting us to this point, and also for her patience with our various schedules in setting this hearing, and thanking you all for allowing us to come in and chat about what we hope might be some helpful revisions to the bylaw. And like you said, I was going to ask how much background you wanted, how much you wanted us to reiterate. You have my letter in the record. But we do, we have seen that there, there are inconsistencies, I know unintentional, and loopholes that some business people have taken advantage of, unfortunately, and that the transient definition within the bylaw seems to be a bit inconsistent with the very carefully crafted seasonal employee housing bylaw. I think that one of the problems is, you know, and what, an elegant solution, I think, is if we can cap at 15% within the HMOD 2 district will alleviate some of the issue because the most recent incident we had in 2023 was the use of the Village Green, 100% of the property, housing seasonal employee workers at the water park on Route 28 as well as Red Jacket. And that was without any kind of a petition to the ZBA. But it was done under the transient definition because the way it is currently written, our building commissioner has expressed the fact that he feels that his hands are somewhat tied and that he really didn't have a choice. So we're hopeful that the revisions we've worked on with Kathy and that we're assuming town council and hopefully the building commissioner as well are in agreement with might solve that ambiguity and just kind of tighten up loopholes so that somebody can't come into a place like the Village Green and use the entire property without the knowledge or approval of the ZBA just based on this transient definition is our goal, is our ultimate goal. And I think some of the suggestions that Kathy has made, you know, remove that ambiguity and make it quite clear that within this district, you know, that you can't exceed 15%. I think another, and whether it's something, I don't think it's it's a change that we've made, but whether it's it's a deficiency that we would want to think about or you all would want to think about going forward. If you use just the transient definition, it's not specific to Yarmouth. So that technically, if somebody wanted to house seasonal employee workers from a neighboring town, they could bring them into Yarmouth and do so. So that's just something to think about as well, not something that we went back and forth with Kathy on, but as we were reviewing this for the hearing tonight, something that we we noticed too.
Okay, thank you. Kathy, would you like to go through the red line version for us?
Sure. I think the first one is relatively easy change to make, which is basically not allowing the option for special permit to go above the 15% in the HMOD two. The HMOD two is a optional overlay district, but the underlying zoning is residential, and some of the businesses are really surrounded by a residential neighborhood. This option is not even allowed if you have a hotel, like a grandfathered hotel in a residential neighborhood, you can't do more than any of any of this there. So what we're trying to do is get it back to not allowing it in areas that might be more residential in nature.
Madam Chair, can we ask questions along the way?
Yes, I think we should, yes.
May I?
Yes, of course, Mr. Saban.
Kathy, how many properties are there that this will be affected by? And do we know, can we identify them?
Yes, I think they're all the properties that are in the HMOD two, which I believe might be seven to eight hotels down there on South Shore Drive.
Kathy, there's eight properties on South Shore Drive.
It's the majority of the Red Jacket properties along.
It's not just the Red Jacket.
No, it's not exclusively them, but sure.
They're basically the existing motel properties off of, close to and off of South Shore Drive.
There's eight.
It makes sense to me.
I worked on South Shore Drive for many years, that's why I know.
So this discussion, just, I want to say it, even though I think I know the answer. This discussion is separate from the from the other motels that do house seasonal employees and are allowed to house more than this 15% because they're in a different district.
They're in a different district, and they have to go to ZBA.
And the ZBA says yes or no, or come back next year after I say yes. Okay, thanks.
They're in the HMOD one. I did look, I did have a nice conversation with Mary Belbon, and she was wondering, well, how many people are even using the 15%? And the only one that is using it through a annual permit from the building department is the Village Green, and they have four of their 46 units, so they're well below the 15%. But none of the other hotels in the HMOD two had are using this.
Thank you for the clarification.
Can I follow up?
Absolutely.
How many of them are on the north side of South Street, actually abutting residential properties?
Well, it's the Village Greens.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yep.
Yeah.
Kenny.
Kenny, you know that area by the back of your head.
There's three.
There's three.
On the north side of South Shore Drive.
Village Green, and what are the other two?
Parker River Motel, and I can't think of the name of the other one.
The Old Wind.
You're talking on the opposite side of the beach.
Right, right, there's.
It actually, but houses.
Yeah. I mean, there's the office for the cottages across the street, but that's not really the hotel facility is not there.
I was counting that as a property.
Oh, you are? Okay. And then that's, there's the the one right on the other side, if you're facing the beach this way, right next to where they're going to put the pumping station.
That's the one I was speaking of.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Okay. Just kind of curious as to what the effect of this is going to be. I guess one of the questions I keep writing myself, and I guess this is for later in the discussion, is what's the difference between having seasonal employees and vacationers that are there for a few days? What, I mean.
Employees are employees.
Right, but if I think this out as as a vacationer going to someplace, some people tend to let their hair down. Carnival in Provincetown is a great example of having a fun time for a weekend. So the seasonal employees, they're not having fun times every day because they're working. So why are we, I'm missing that connection here, why we are trying to restrict this to 15% when it's kind of an economic decision for a business? Do you want to take 15% of your business away to put housing in, or do you want to, you know, rent it for $250 a night?
Voluntary, right?
So I'm trying to understand where we're going with all this.
You can still use the 15%, it's just you wouldn't be given the special permit option to go beyond 15%.
Why not? That's my question, I don't understand.
I'm just saying, I just want to be clear that they, you would still have the ability to do the 15%.
Yeah, the 15% is is there, it's the excess beyond that. They've had that for a while.
The excess was being abused.
Yes, yeah.
Because of the transient definition.
Okay.
Just thinking and asking our questions a lot. Thank you.
Any any other questions or Kathy, why don't you continue? Yep, show us the next. Got a couple of red line edits here.
I think it's just the transient definition, just kind of some clarifications, it's not significantly different, but I think we wanted to be sure that we were talking about all of these occupancy requirements are at a single motel or hotel property, so it's not a case of shifting from one room to another room within the same hotel.
Which was one of the things that we ran into.
And then just clarifying that the definition, this particular transit definition doesn't apply to the onsite property managers, where we do allow some units that are allowed for onsite property managers, then also if it doesn't apply if you did qualify for the seasonal employee housing at motels and hotels per section 404.5. So just clarifying that this really is applying to hotels and motels, not these other sections. And then looking at it, we also have a definition for transient at extended stay hotels, so we're just kind of matching, mirroring that same language change.
Kathy, what is an extended stay hotel? How do you define that?
That's something that it actually has, there's a whole section in the zoning bylaw with specific provisions and requirements. The motel room needs to be at least 300 square feet, that type of thing, so it would allow maybe have a little kitchenette, so allow someone to stay there for a little bit longer, basically up to 90 calendar days. It's more of a, yeah, it's more of like a little mini suite or a little mini studio is what it kind of is.
That's it. I had just, just in an abundance of caution, Kathy, I don't know if you saw my email this morning, if you can keep scrolling down, and this may be, you know, way too many, you know, too much belt and suspenders, down to the footnote below the existing use table. At the at the end of paragraph 43, just a pending, subject to the limitations set forth in 404.5.2, because we have yes under HMOD two there.
Well, it just says it's subject to approval in accordance with the provisions of section 404.5, which is all of that section.
Okay. Like I said, it may be too too much, but yeah, that was the one suggestion we had made.
I'm not sure I understand what the footnote.
They want to reference a very specific section of section 404.5.
Which was the one that eliminated the ability to house more than 15% within HMOD two.
Just trying to drive it home.
I don't think the, well, as our, as our, as our expert in zoning, that kind of redundancy is really not, is really not required. I think we've tried to accommodate your your concerns in repeating in several cases.
You have indeed, thank you.
Over indeed, over, you know, more than once. And it doesn't help in zoning lingo to, oh, sometimes less is more in zoning. It gives people flexibility one way or another.
Although I sat on zoning, and I will tell you, I think they should repeat it as often as you can, because there will be someone that will get up there and say, oh, it's a par.
And just given what we've, given what we've seen.
And they will try to, you know, make the exception.
That's what's happened. I think we're covered here. Given what we've seen, we were just trying to.
Kathy, you think it's pretty tight?
I think the concern is, is if you ever want to change it again later, if you have the same information in five different locations, have you caught the change in five different locations? So I think it's, I think it's better to keep it simple, and I think obviously the building commissioner understands that you need to meet all sections of 404.5.
May I ask you a question? That was my actual next question is, how much has the building commissioner been engaged in this process?
We, I reviewed this with him and also with town council, and both of them are fine.
That was going to be my next question.
And they're both fine, they're both fine with these with these changes.
Okay. And 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 the other one is, of course, is the implementation. It's not so much about making the change, it's, okay, who's making sure that, you know, who's going to actually enforce it? Which I assume will still be in the same place it was before, but now with a different bylaw supporting it, or different language that's more clear, supporting in this particular case, those properties that we're discussing on in the HMOD.
In the enforcement, it's a good point, and as Mark always says, the citizens must be engaged in the enforcement.
For sure.
He cannot do it all, so that he will rely on, as, you know, Will said, everyone's got to watch and be engaged in, help him with the enforcement, because he just doesn't have the manpower to be checking of how many people in every room and that kind of thing.
Any other, any other comments or concerns? Kathy, anything, anything else from you?
No, I guess we were just kind of.
We wanted to reach some consensus here that the board feels comfortable moving this forward on our agenda for the special town meeting. We have one other article, zoning amendment, that we'll be proposing with regard to affordable housing definition and the and the in lieu of payment. So we would couple that with this if the board is in agreement.
Madam Chair, you mean one hearing as we on on our schedule to cover both proposed amendments?
Correct. Do you want to move forward with two zoning amendments?
I'm just making sure it's all going to happen on the same night.
I just need the consensus of, I think we have consensus of the board to move forward, so we'll be, we will do that then. I want to, I want to thank you for coming this evening, and thank you for, you know, public engagement is really important, and we appreciate all that you've done to bring this forward. I will say it's taken some time for you to get to this place, and we appreciate your patience, but I would also like to just remind you that staff here at the town hall do their best to interpret what they see as the requirements. And you may have been frustrated and disappointed at times with some of the actions that were and and interpretations that took place. I assure you that the building commissioner and the town planner and anyone else who works for them are looking for everyone's best interests in a most timely fashion, and we're glad that we could get to this point where we have resolved this and we're moving forward together. What could be better?
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that all four of you coming this evening, and we look forward to special town meeting.
Thank you very much.
Please join us for our public hearings, of course.
Oh, we will.
Because we will identify you as as the, as our authors, ghost, I don't know, they wouldn't be ghost authors, would they?
This is not a petition.
It's not a petition. No, we're sponsoring it.
We're sponsoring it.
That's the question, do you guys want to sponsor this and bring it forward?
That's the consensus.
I don't.
I think you should.
I mean, the consensus is the group, but I don't necessarily. I thought this was a petition article.
Oh, no, no, no. No, no, I thought I thought I made that clear. This is not unlike the housing, affordable housing in lieu of, which we all kind of agreed. Yep, let's go forward with that. Kind of a handshake, if you're not, that's okay, we'll we'll record it as such. I think the consensus of the board is to go forward.
And as Mr. Saban knows, we're going to have a public hearing in the first week of October, and he'll be able to vote accordingly.
So I mean, you know, all the, all the, all those opportunities will be there to register
the A's and the N's.
I'm not saying I'm for or against this.
You're not ready?
I was not prepared to sponsor this.
You'll have your opportunity.
Understood.
Sponsorship might be the wrong word, you know, I don't know what we would call this, Kathy.
Do you recommend this change or not? So it's not necessarily sponsorship or whatever, but ultimately you will be voting to recommend or not recommend.
Yes.
There's no point in moving forward if you're going to say not recommend.
Right.
I'm more here, whatever the pros and cons are.
So we'll continue with the process.
Sure.
Okay, good.
Here you go.
That's what we want. Okay.
Well, we appreciate your patience and your comment.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Do you want to go over the calendar real quick, or do you want to do that later? The count, the special town meeting calendar?
Oh, sure, why don't we do that now?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, it's later in your agenda, it's it's attached to the advisory from the town council, but we.
Excuse me, it may help the nice people that were just here to listen to this part, because that may be the, one of the dates where they would ask to be come back.
I'll send them emails.
Right, emails, great for that kind of stuff.
So at our next meeting on September 4th, I would hope to have the actual articles written, so just taking those red lines and turning them into a into a formal article, because I'd be looking for your general support for that to submit as the draft to the town administrator's office, which is, needs to be done by September 13th. And so I would envision that we would probably be having our special, our public hearing, I think, what's the first meeting in October? Is it the?
October 2nd.
2nd?
You actually put it right on here, Kathy.
I did, I'm too good.
At the back of our, bottom of our agenda.
We'd go past Kathy, she did it right. So that would be our public hearing for that, and then we would be October 22nd, we're tentatively on for meeting with the select board for zoning changes. And that's, that's also the night that they would close, I believe they would close the warrant that evening as well. So just to give you some idea that September 4th, we'll have the articles, hopefully we'll be in good shape for that. If you guys say okay, I'll advertise it, we'll have our public hearing on October 2nd, and then we'll go to the select board on October 22nd.
Next on our agenda, village centers, center overlay district, site plan review, SPR application, 2024, 1A. We've, we've been here before, welcome back, welcome back.
Welcome to see everyone again.
Yeah. I, I, I really appreciate you coming back again, and I know you've been working really hard on some changes. And in the meantime, you know, Kathy and I did take the opportunity to meet with the chief of the fire department and his staff, and it seemed to, seemed to help a little bit.
Definitely, I really appreciate all your time and effort.
It's all due to Kathy. So I'd like to have you walk through your, let me just get my paperwork here together. Sorry about that. The change that you've made, you've been able to make with regard to the 811 Route 28, South Yarmouth, assessor's map 33, parcel 72, zoning districts VCOD, VC2, HMOD 1, road and B2. The applicant is proposing a modification to a previously reviewed project, I believe it was June 5th we met, to redevelop a 0.5 acre property into multifamily housing with a total of eight one bedroom units utilizing the zoning bylaw, section 414, VCOD 2. So I'll stop there, and we'll move forward with how the plan has changed, and hopefully we're moving forward here for reconsideration. Thank you.
Great, well, good evening. Brian Hugation from BSC Group, professional engineer, and with me is the applicant Christina Megason. Glad you had a chance to, so you're, you got the background information, but I'll just give it for for anyone listening in. But essentially, after we had received your approval and we were thinking about things, and I think we really weren't happy with the way the site turned out with that big ugly turnaround there. And, you know, as you had pointed out, we only had one parking space per unit, and we knew that that was going to be a challenge, and I know that, you know, you certainly weren't thrilled with that either, but nonetheless, it did meet the bylaw. So after, you know, meeting with the the fire department and Kathy and Mark, the fire department was open to finding another way that we could satisfy the state fire code, which is what was requiring that that turnaround. So in the end, the resolution was we could put a fire hydrant on the property, and that would, wasn't thrilled with still having to back his engine out onto Route 28, but thought he could live with it. So.
And what we've done.
And what we've done is, we removed the turnaround, we moved the building north, closer to Route 28, and then we just basically created some additional parking in the back of it. We didn't have to move the septic system, we essentially didn't have to move the drainage system, we just reconfigured it a little bit. But the biggest thing that we moved, obviously, was the building, and then we created this additional parking back here. So the VCO D bylaw allows a range anywhere from one space per unit to 1.5, so that would allow for a maximum of 12 spaces. So we have designed an additional eight spaces, so for those four additional spaces that we're seeking, we will be going to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. Everything else is, is largely the same as you remember it, except for the slight configuration. I won't put you through the, walking you through everything, but maybe instead, I would just ask if you have questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
Madam Chair, I'll jump in first. I think it's a great revision of the plans, my first comment. Just a, one quick question, just so, because I couldn't find it in the plan, is where are you proposing that the dumpster's gonna end up? Right, oh, right there in the corner, okay, I missed it, thank you.
Yeah, because it was more prominent before.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. I, I lost it in the plan, so I appreciate you pointing out. I, I think, working with the fire department and the additional spaces, which I think were absolutely needed, but, you know, basically it's a two-car world for every couple, you know? I think it's a huge improvement to the property.
Great, thank you.
How much, how far forward did they move it? How many feet? Remember?
Forty? I was gonna say forty-two, I'm not sure of the exact...
It was substantial, because it was a lot.
It was quite a bit.
It was a lot.
Forty sounds, plus or minus, sounds about right, yeah.
But it still leaves the buffer out on 28 and everything, so.
Mr. Rubens, ready?
Yes. I just want to ask about the dumpster, which I did find, but it wasn't easy, but that's okay. Is the access to it directly from behind where the folks are parking, in other words, there's no other way to get to the, it's just you go down, you turn left, you hit that dumpster, you dump it, do the Macarena, you somehow get the dump truck out of there?
100% correct.
All right, the dump truck's gonna be doing some...
It'll be a front loader, and it's gonna, right, it's gonna have to...
It's gonna maneuver.
A little gyration.
Around, but also the idea is that, you know, I, well...
Because there's no backside access, is what I'm saying, right?
Absolutely not.
No.
It's always been...
We have drain, a drainage system for the roof there, that's, yep.
Exactly, that's on the backside. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
All kinds of landscaping.
Yeah, all kinds of landscaping back there.
Okay, I see that on here. But I'd also like to echo Mr., Mr. Smith, I think it's a, it looks like a win-win, you know, and thankfully, the fire department is, is now a partner in all of this, which is ultimately what anybody asks for when engaging with the, you know, the town departments.
We were very, we were very happy, they were very, very happy that they were so willing to work with us.
Yeah.
And keep it safe still for, for everyone, you know?
Could I just clarify? I couldn't, and this is, again, I looked at the plan, but I didn't see it. Can you just describe where the hydrant will be?
Yes.
It's on the front.
The hydrant's gonna be, this is the, this is the center of the building where the laundry room is, and we have the hydrant shown. It has to be within 100 feet of that.
The street.
Looking for it.
Fire.
I saw the sewer connect, I saw the sewer connection. Sorry, which plan are you on, septic and utilities?
Northwest corner of the building.
It's right, it's right here.
Got it. Okay, cool. Thank you. No more questions, Madam Chair.
Anyone else?
Just make one comment?
Oh, yes.
When you were here in June, I also commented, it was not part of the plan, but we talked about irrigation system, given the fact that the trees and the can, and the, and the landscaping now play a more prominent part, I would, if you can, I would really urge you to, I think everything on 28 should be irrigated so that things don't die. Just look at the CVS on the corner of Higgins Crowell and Route 28, there's no irrigation system there, and it always looks like the Sahara Desert. And it protects your investment, because you have a lot of investment in those trees.
Yeah, a lot of money in those trees.
It can be, it all worked in, I think it would be a good investment.
We can talk about it, and see what it'll cost, and, you know, how to put it in, and all that stuff, and we can see. Something we can put in, like, after?
It doesn't, it doesn't require the, any approvals, so, yes, it is, yep.
Just money-wise, I don't know how...
How big is the main building again? How many square feet?
Well, it's all one building, really, it's all connected.
How many square feet?
Like, each unit?
No, the entire unit.
Oh, the entire thing. That I don't know.
Six thousand-ish.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So I think the, the one major change that we need to have a consensus on, if I have this right, Kathy, is, oh, I'm sorry, Jim. Sorry.
No, don't...
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I just had a couple of quick questions and comments. How many additional parking spaces did this create?
Eight.
It created eight more.
Yeah.
Wonderful. And I didn't have a problem finding the dumpster, but I'm, I'm curious if there's any screening on the east side of where that dumpster is, fencing or something? I see lots of vegetation before that, but there seems to be a blank space there, so...
So there is a white vinyl fence that's proposed around the entire thing, yes. In addition to that, there's other landscaping that's on-site, not necessarily designed specifically to, to screen that. We figure the fence does that, but...
Okay, so, that's it. I think outstanding, I like the, the changes. I'm glad to hear that the town and you have been able to work together to get something done. Good.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to clarify, Kathy, you know, the, the approval that we gave back in June had some conditions. What have we changed in terms of the conditions?
I think the only condition I could eliminate, and I think I sent this to you just to, was the one about making sure that the dumpster was outside the rear 20-foot setback, but it's over here, and it's, can have a 10-foot setback, so you're fine with that location, so I eliminated that. And then I did, it's in my, my planner report, but we can go through site plan review and design review again, because there's generally comments, but I did want to touch base with the fire department and the building department. The fire department was, was fine with the proposed layout, but they, they did have a little bit of concerns with that hydrant being so close to the building, and they kind of wanted to work with you to pick it, pick the location, but they said we can deal with that during the general permitting process when they apply for the building permit. And then the building commissioner did ask, did outline the relief that would be needed. In addition to that one extra piece of relief that you would need for the, for extra spaces, they eliminated the need for the relief from the rear setback, because they moved that all forward, so they have the adequate rear setback now. So that would be nicer, I think, for the, for the people...
That live behind there.
People that live behind there. And then again, the original architectural plans that were submitted before have not changed.
Have not changed.
Same, exactly.
So as far as additional, the conditions, I just want, I like to have them all in one place, so no one has to go back and look at another one. So the additions were to coordinate with the fire department for final approval of the fire hydrant location, fire lane markings, that was mentioned by Matt Beers, and then coordinate with the water department on the water main locations. I was just afraid with that reconfiguration of the infiltration, now the water main is going through the, it's cutting the corner of the infiltration structure now, in this little corner here. Easy peasy, you can figure that out, it doesn't involve you guys per se, but I just wanted to make sure that that, you were aware of that, it got coordinated. And then everything else is the same as before.
Okay. So, and we, 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 we need to make a motion to make sure we include these additional conditions, right, Kathy? Yeah, so...
It's listed in this list of eight that you have here?
Yes, they're all right there.
Yes.
So if I make a motion that says what Kathy says, or do I need to read it?
You need to read it.
Anybody else want to make this motion?
No, you make the motion.
I, I make a motion to approve the residence at 811 Main Multifamily Housing Project at 811 Route 28, VCO D, SPR 2024-1A, as presented at the planning board meeting of August 21st, 2024, and in accordance with the plans and materials submitted, subject to the following conditions. One, revised easement for the shared access driveway shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds prior to the issuance of a building permit. Two, vary the building materials on the eastern side of the building between clapboard and shingles. Three, provide one affordable unit. Four, coordinate with the fire department for final approval of the fire hydrant location and fire lane markings. Didn't we there do that in this?
I think it needs a little more tweaking, based on my discussions with the fire department. They're, they're generally happy, but...
Okay, thank you. Five, coordinate with the water department on water main locations. Six, existing trees which are to be retained and protected during construction shall be identified on the erosion and sediment control plan. Seven, plantings along the southern property line abutting the residential zoning district shall we, shall fully meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw, section 414.8, .9, .3, .B. Eight, any relief required shall be sought through the zoning board of appeals.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
When are you gonna be, what is your plans for submissions next?
Sure, so tomorrow, tomorrow being Thursday, either tomorrow or Friday, we'll be submitting both to conservation commission and the zoning board of appeals as well.
They're gonna want the decision.
Yes. But we'll, I assume we'll have it, you, you would have gotten it to us before the hearings anyways, I would think.
Oh, I would definitely get it to you before the hearings, but I'm just saying, it sounds like you need it tomorrow or Friday at the latest.
Oh, I, I don't, I don't know that...
Tom doesn't care, zoning...
You know, okay, so we have to submit it with the zoning package, in other words...
If, unless I call Dolores and let her know it's coming on Monday, she'll be fine, or whatever, but yeah.
If you can do it, Kathy, we'd appreciate it.
We will do it. I just wanted to know what your schedule was, so we could meet it.
Thanks again for coming back.
Thank you so much, thank you for talking to the fire department, too. I appreciate it.
Good luck with the next meeting.
This actually was a, a good example of, you know, something that we all learned about, gee, just put in a fire hydrant, you know, because all of the properties on 28 are like yours, you know, long and narrow, and having the turnaround really constrains, I mean, it's obvious in the way that you've redone this, so...
Honestly, if you didn't think about it, and, and, you know, everyone on the board think about it and bring it up, we, we never would have thought about that.
You didn't even know about it.
We would never have known, so, you know, it does make a difference, listening, talking, everyone, you know.
Well, we're very happy, yeah, good luck with it. We're looking forward to it, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up, 2024 Housing Bond Bill.
Wow.
That little thing?
That old chestnut?
Big deal.
The 300-page fact sheet?
Wow, Madam Chair, I did not see that in our email.
No, this is old, this is from the original. Kathy sent this...
That's not necessarily what was signed?
No, no.
Well, it didn't change too much.
I was gonna say, pretty close, pretty close.
So, I don't know.
I think Jeff Lacy, who's, works for the Rural Planning Association's, on our planner kind of email chats, had done a summary, pulled out all the parts of the approved housing bond bill that were related to the ADU, so you can kind of see the exact language. This is what town council looked at when they did, did their summary. Doesn't include seasonal communities, because they're probably not too many seasonal for them, but, but this was very helpful, I think, just so you can see the actual detailed language, which I found to be very useful. Do you want me to dive in, or did you?
No, no. Give it whatever attention you want, Kathy.
Seasonal communities, Yarmouth was not an automatic designated as a seasonal community, because they wanted to have over 35% seasonal housing units, and we have less than that. But the state may designate Yarmouth as a seasonal community based on some factors, which I think we would be relatively qualified for with regard to the high rate of short-term rentals, significant seasonal visitors, excessive disparity between area median income and median home price, percentage of housing stock not used as a primary residence, and high variations in monthly employment. Ultimately, if we, we did qualify as a seasonal community, we would need to accept that designation at town meeting, so it takes a little bit of time.
Madam Chair, that's a great question.
Yes.
So ultimately, does the planning board need to take a position on, on the seasonal community designation? And, I'm not, I guess what I'm asking is, since we didn't qualify automatically, do we still want to?
Yeah, well, I think it gets into what's the, what's the benefits and what's the detriments.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, you were about to say that. Go ahead.
No, it's a very good question, because, you know, when you kind of compare the two things, so the, the benefits of being a seasonal community are kind of outlined in the advisory, and I think a lot of the things that it allows you to do is to designate housing that has to be for year-round housing occupancy, which doesn't necessarily mean a 12 months a year, it could be 10, 10 months a year. And then also giving a, housing units with a preference for seasonal community, public employees, so employees that you need to run a year-round town, providing some preference for housing for those, for those types of, of workers. It could be teachers, police and fire, and that type of thing. They can also allow us for the establishment of a year-round trust fund. We obviously have an affordable housing trust, I don't know how that would be funded, I don't know whether they'd be providing some funds that might, might be going towards that. And then also, you know, housing for individuals who, you can designate housing for individuals who produce or support artistic and literary activities. So there's some, there's some things along those lines that become beneficial. And they also haven't come up with a, as I mentioned, year-round housing is 10 months per year, so that kind of makes a little bit of sense. But they also have this word attainable housing, they haven't fully defined what attainable means, but that might be the, you know, the 100 to 200 area median income, so more of the workforce housing type, it would be identified as attainable. So kind of what do you need to do if you are a seasonal community? You must adopt zoning ordinances that permit undersized lots to be used for the creation of attainable year-round housing. That's something I need to coordinate with Mark and town council, what's in our existing bylaw? Do we kind of already have something along those lines? But there are some, some different things.
Well, and the tiny houses is also the thing that stuck out to me, too.
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm just looking over here a little bit more.
Sized lots and tiny houses.
Yep.
And that's the other thing with the regard to the tiny houses, if you look at it, it says the tiny house is defined as a detached structure containing a dwelling unit containing 400 square feet or less, excluding lofts. They indicate in the actual housing bond bill that, basically if they're movable, they have to be registered with the RMB. So how is that different than a mobile home? So there's a question. I think we all think of, you know, tiny homes as kind of these super cute, and they, they're adorable.
On a foundation?
Well, no, they're, if it's, yeah, it doesn't say that.
When you think of a tiny home, is that what I mean?
No, I think, I mean, you see them, I love my YouTube, they...
Yeah.
Yeah, they build it on a chassis, but then they screen around it, so it doesn't look like you're, you're really viewing it, but it's, and it's hooked up to all the different utilities. But how is that different than an RV, and how is that different than a mobile home? Well, no, they're, if it's, yeah, it doesn't say that.
When you think of a tiny home, is that what I mean?
No, I think, I mean, you see them, I love my YouTube, they sh-
Yeah.
Yeah, they build it on a chassis, but then they screen around it, so it doesn't look like you're really viewing it, but it's, and it's hooked up to all the different utilities, but how is that different than an RV, and how is that different than a mobile home? So tiny homes have kind of become the rage, and they, and they look one way, but by allowing those, are you allowing maybe some other things that you may not necessarily want? So those are some things that we need to, to think about in a little bit more detail.
My RV is my tiny home.
It is.
Yeah.
Your lawfully allowed RV?
My lawfully allowed RV, because it's registered.
That's right, it's registered.
Just wanted to clarify.
There's also a little thing in here I noticed, that I thought was kind of interesting, because we don't have a residential tax exemption in the town of Yarmouth, I think Barnstable has that, but it's limited, basically, the exemptions up to thirty-five percent of the median home price. This, actually, there's a little section in here that allows it to go up to fifty percent. That might be something, you know, that the finance committee or the assessors department or the treasurers department might wanna look into and run, run some numbers and say, you know, how is this benefiting year-round residents and putting more of a tax burden on these second homes that are causing some of our other problems? Obviously, we would still be collecting the same exact amount of taxes, it just would be distributed a little bit differently, so I thought that was interesting, a little bit of a nugget in there that I, that I deciphered. Obviously, we'd all know about the accessory dwelling units, per the advisory, we have a hundred and eighty days from when this became effective, so February second of twenty twenty-five is when it comes into effect regardless of whether we make any, any changes to our zoning, so we're gonna possibly have certain sections and portions of our existing bylaw that would be unenforceable by our building department. So we are, okay.
So is the intent to review and match and then make edits to the annual town meeting, or further down the road?
I, I think it's a little bit new, I think we definitely can't do it for special town meeting, because I don't think we can make the changes, I don't think we can educate the public that this is not something that's coming from the planning board, it's something that we're just trying to match, I think a little bit more time would allow us to do that, I think town council and the building commissioner can work together to identify very clearly what portions of our bylaw would be considered reasonable restrictions, and what he would have to, have to ignore. It's not ideal, and I wish they had given us a little bit more time, because we, most of the towns are, you know, we have annual town meeting, at least, but maybe some people didn't even have special town meeting, it would've been nice if we could have incorporated that into, into our regular processes without having any additional special town meeting, but, you know, it's like any Dover amendment, you can do some reasonable regulations, and it's just clarifying with town council what in our existing bylaw is reasonable, things like size restrictions, dimensional setbacks and height limitations, prohibiting short-term rentals, and then also the potential for requiring site plan review. Our site plan review, except for the VCOD, is really just town staff getting together and talking about how you need to meet all these different regulations, that's called our site plan review team. I don't know whether we wanna be going through, I don't know whether you can really go through site plan review with a regulatory board, because that's very similar to special permits, so that's something that needs to be figured out as well, do we wanna add that layer, just to have a check on, in some fashion, on that. Some of the changes that we're gonna, you know, of note that we really need to make is one ADU is allowed by right in any zoning district allowing single-family homes, I think that's pretty much everywhere except for the B three, you cannot require that owner occupancy, that was a big discussion here, so this could be, someone could come in and buy a whole bunch of, of residential homes, put it in an accessory, and then you'd basically be renting out maybe with an offcape property owner, so a little concern.
On that, I just wanna make an anecdotal note, in the last week, since the governor signed this, I've received three postcards in the mail. Offering to buy my house for cash, and so I've started to look at these companies that are, that are out there, and I'm gonna keep track as best I can. Who, who are these people? They know that it's, they know, they know, they're out there, they know what they're doing, and they're, who knows where they're from, what they're doing, cash, call us, all of a sudden, you know, three, from the time the governor signed the bill.
Interesting.
So, I'll give you some updates as I do my forensic work on these guys.
You know, it also becomes, you know, enforcement, another enforcement issue for us, because you know that some, some of them are gonna be short-term rentals, you know, so, how do you, I mean, you can maybe, the accessory unit has to be year-round, but what about the house, can that be short-term rental? So it's gonna, it's not necessarily gonna solve as much of our problem as we would like, where we were saying that the house has to be your primary residence, so that's your residence, that's a year-round unit, and then you're creating another year-round unit, so lots, lots of concerns. No more than one additional parking space shall be required for the ADU, it does say no parking within point five miles from a bus station, I don't know whether the Hyannis Transportation Center would be considered that, but I hope not.
It is.
I mean, how can it not be considered a bus station? It literally is a bus station, Kathy.
Absolutely is.
But the buses go so few places, yeah.
I mean, that's something I would ask our town council about what the definition of a bus station is, but I can't imagine, that doesn't fit it.
It's called a transportation center, so it's a bus station.
You're not getting around that one.
I'm in and out, I don't think we're gonna be able to get past that one.
So that, that's something to think about, and then identifying what that point five miles is from there, what part of town is actually impacted, obviously, it's not huge.
You actually measure the half mile, we're on the site.
I'm sure it will come down to, it will come down to houses on streets.
When you, when you think about the location of the transportation center, it's like almost in West Yarmouth.
Yeah.
And do they consider the, the steamship authority part of the transportation, because if it is, then it's even closer.
Yeah.
Behind those parks.
Well, closer, further deep into town.
Yeah, but closer actually to hang, you're right.
If they take the steamship authority, I think they might consume Hyannis Park.
And so, no parking is allowed if you're within a half of, you don't have to require, it doesn't mean they can't provide.
Whereas our bylaw required it, after all the conversations we had.
I'm sorry, I'm just reading, yeah, I'm reading it literally.
We required two spaces.
Was it two?
Two.
Yeah, we required two spaces, because we thought everyone was gonna be having two cars.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we thought wrong, I just think that now we're gonna have the unintended consequences of where, where all these people are gonna park.
Park on the street.
They're gonna park on the street, that's exactly what's gonna happen, and we're gonna have the same issues, or more of the issues that we were trying to avoid.
Avoid.
Regardless of what part of our beautiful town you live in, nobody wants more street parking.
The bigger problem is, this is a blanket solution to a problem where we.
It has nuances.
That's right.
Exactly, and this is gonna change the character of every town in every part of the state.
Yeah.
And how we, and we, how we move forward in providing housing accommodations.
And as Kathy mentioned, and I think I had mentioned this to her in an email when I'd read about the signing, I was like, I really hope there's a bunch of very nice people that work in all of the Cape towns that care about these issues, that talk to each other, and thankfully, there are, because this is a fifteen times problem for the Cape.
I mean, I thought also, oh, it's a three hundred.
No, no, I get that, I'm just trying to keep it, I'm trying to keep it from the bridge east, and like, okay, and I respect our friends on the island, so let's call it seventeen, so, the good news is, those seventeen, the nice people like Kathy, in all those seventeen towns seem to have a way of communicating with each other and saying, okay, how can we figure this out together and use the hive mind to try to at least, be at least going through the checklist of the who, as much as the, the what, we need to do, and who do we need to talk to, and who do we need to consider as we figure out how we've, you know, the governor has come, is coming down from the mountain with the tablets on February second, twenty twenty-five, and saying, I have given unto thee.
I just am shocked with the towns.
There's six months now to figure out with all the nice people that Kathy gets to work with, sorry, Madam Chair, for the.
It really tramples local zoning.
This is what they get when you get a one-party rule.
Okay, well, Jim.
Yeah.
So.
And, and not, and not to correct you, but Martha's Vineyard, I think, has five towns, so.
You're right, I apologize to my friends on the vineyard.
I don't know what the actual number is, but it's like.
It is five.
Is it five?
You're right, I apologize to my friends on the vineyard.
Fifteen, seventeen, twenty-one?
What I'm trying to say is, we're all in this together, and thankfully, thankfully, nice people like Kathy have resources in order to think about seasonal community designation or not, how we're going to interpret all of this, and like, as we've always said, right, Susan, enforce.
The parking and the, the ownership, well, I think, two issues that almost everyone agreed on.
Yeah.
That was, we always wanted to have the owner.
Biggest discussions.
Absolutely, we did, and we talked about the corporations, and the parking, and parking was an issue.
We heard it loud and clear from citizen after citizen.
Yeah, and actually, the, the women that were here tonight, with the, the, part of their problem was the parking, you know, people driving, so it's just, I don't know.
I know we interrupted you, you were on letter D.
Yeah.
We were talking about bus stations.
You can always provide the parking on-site, and I think, I'm sure if people have the room, they would like to do that, but if you don't have to provide it, then it's gonna be street parking.
Or they're parking on their front lawns.
Right, yeah, that's, that's a good, yeah, that's a good point, like, is that a reasonable, we may, can't say two, but we can say one, can we identify where we want it, is that considered reasonable, or is that excessive and not allowed? So those types of things, literally, line by line, we're gonna have to go through, and see what we can and cannot do.
They use the word reasonable all, everywhere, and that's always, of course, open to interpretation. One person reasonable, the other person's outrageous.
That's right.
For letter D, I can't, are we already doing that?
We have two different sizes for one bedroom and two bedrooms, so the two-bedroom would be nine hundred, we just wouldn't have the smaller one that's eight hundred, so we'd still be the fifty percent. It is limited to one ADU by right, but can require a special permit for more than one ADU. What I'm not clear on, I think it means that if you choose to have, allow for two ADUs on a property, the first one's by right, the second one is by special permit.
If you have a five-acre piece of land and you wanna put two of them on, the first one is, is a gimme, after that, you gotta get a permit.
I, I don't know whether you're.
You spend on that, talking about by right or special permit?
Oh, no. Please do not, don't start.
I don't know if we're required to allow a second ADU by special permit, or that's, if we decide we wanna have a second ADU, it's okay if we say it's by special permit, versus the tablet that comes down and says, the first one's by right.
Sounds like the second one is, is up to us, whether you give it or not.
I think so, that would be my interpretation.
When you say us, Jim, do you mean the planning board and the zoning?
No, through a special permit.
Or you mean the ZBA?
Yeah.
I mean, this is not that elaborate, the Affordable Homes Act is not that elaborate when you start looking at what they specifically said about things.
Except it tramples on home rule.
Totally.
I'm just saying, it's, it's not, there's not much to it.
Let's be honest, that's exactly what it does, right there in a nutshell.
Thank you, real estate industry.
I don't know if it's the real estate industry as much as it's the, the housing industry as a whole, which is.
They're all together, it's the opportunity to make money.
Well, it's trying to find a way to address a serious problem, but.
I, I think players like Hack were very influential.
I think they're a hundred percent influential.
Yes, Governor Healy's ear, so, and, and that's just our housing assistance corporation here, you have POA.
Oh, the housing advocacy is very, it's a very, yeah.
Isn't it interesting?
And much better organized and influential.
And if you look at who gives to those organizations, it's all real estate money. The underpinning for that, because they're, and that's, that's natural, I mean, they, they wanna have the housing built, they have advocates for it, that's a natural stream of, of income for them, that didn't surprise me at all, and it's not, it's not, you know, Catholic charities giving to the, it's, you know, the Real Estate Board of the United States, or whatever they wanna call, because it goes together, it makes sense. We had a need, and they recognized it, and they could fund the, you know, they could fund the, the movement, I mean, we start with our own.
That's what happens, every industry does what they need to do to benefit that industry, be it real estate, or, you know.
Provide a social, I mean, it's such a social problem.
Automakers, I mean, you know.
Okay, Kath, let's continue.
There's a couple opportunities for using under, undersized lots and/or adjacent non-conforming lots, like, it's called the merger doctrine, and that's supposed, something that I think, when I talked to Mark, he thought that we kinda had that generally already allowed in our bylaw, but if you're a seasonal community, we already talked about that, you do get the, the undersized lots for creation of attainable housing, but there's also the adjacent non-conforming lots under common ownership, if you have a certain size and a certain amount of frontage, they may not be considered merged under your zoning. Sometimes if you have two set lots together, and they were very, very tiny, because we have that, but then, and it was owned by the same person, over time, if our zoning increased, it was, those lots were considered merged for zoning purposes, and they were no longer two separate buildable lots, now they're saying, we want to keep those lots separate, so you have two separate buildable lots, so you might see someone who has their house here and then a big side yard, that at one point was probably another buildable lot, back when that subdivision was done in the nineteen twenty-seven, or whenever, so that, that's something that might start allowing that those, they're not considered merged, and those might become buildable lots, but they did put some restrictions on them, and we need, I don't, we need to be sure that this can somehow gets in there, that they can't be more than one thousand eight hundred fifty square feet of heated living space, minimum of three bedrooms, and cannot be a seasonal home or a short-term rental, so that's something that's in there, I mean, we have to do some, we have to do something to get that, and like I say, this is something that we're working with town council and staff to see what we have now, what we might need to change to accommodate this, obviously, seasonal communities, we don't need to do that right now, because I think that's gonna take a little while before they start designating new people as seasonal communities.
Excuse me, Kathy, which of the Cape towns did qualify?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't look.
Okay.
I would think every, probably, I know Dennis for sure.
We came within two percent.
I'm sure, like, in the outer Cape.
I'm sure everybody in here, I'm sure everything out there was designated, so.
So, outer Cape, maybe even a little bit of lower Cape, definitely Dennis, but like Sandwich, I think, is only fifteen percent, so they're.
Word, like, a thirty-two, I think you wrote?
We're thirty-two, yeah, so.
Madam Chair, can I ask?
Mr. Saban.
The merged lots, we did that to ourselves when we changed from twenty-five thousand square feet to forty thousand square feet, I know in my old neighborhood that a developer had to take twenty thousand square foot lots and put them together to make forty thousand square foot lots, and there are ISOs in the neighborhood now, because there's this one house with huge pieces of land on either side, and every other house is like da, 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 so it looks kinda, but, they built the house, I think, in the middle, so I'm wondering, before we go through the exercise of this, is, how many of those are actually in town that we would even, I mean, if it's like, is it worth the effort, or are there an insignificant number of them to even go through that exercise?
I don't know how you'd find that information out.
I don't know how you do, but, but, I, I mean, how many of those are really in town?
A lot of them are south of twenty-eight, because a lot of those subdivisions are super old, and they were cut up into these tiny little chunks, but you have to be at least ten thou, there's, like I say, that you have to be at least ten thousand square feet and have at least seventy-five feet of frontage, so there's some size requirements, it couldn't be like, super small lots, like seventy-five thousand square feet.
But you're right, probably the majority of them are, are in those neighborhoods where there were ten thousand square foot neighborhoods, and somebody bought the lot next door to protect their privacy, or for the future of, you know, did it for my, for my grandchildren, they're gonna have a house, and then we made all that merged together, so I'm just wondering if there's a lot of those, or if it's, I mean, if it's not worth the effort to even go through, I don't know how you divide it, decide it.
How would you, is, is it even possible to?
You have to go through deeds, I mean, you have to go through the deeds to see when the lots were merged.
I think the only way you're gonna find out is, it's kinda like, you know, zoning enforcement, you know, you're not gonna know until somebody comes forward and says, hey, I'm one of them, you know, kinda like, hey.
The registry of deeds, it's still gonna look like two lots, right? Sometimes it may be on one deed, and it might be parcel one or parcel two.
It would be a parcel one, parcel two, then the deed was combined.
Ah, okay.
So the, but, to go through that search, I don't even know how you begin that, I really don't.
I, I wouldn't have a clue.
No.
Wow.
I think you're gonna find out by, by when people realize that they got it.
Twenty-one towns, sorry, Martha's Vineyard, all twenty-one towns, depending on their seasonal status, will have to then account for.
I mean, eighteen hundred square feet, it's pretty big.
And a three-bedroom minimum.
Minimum.
That is like, I'm like, what?
What, I know it, and try to enforce that, that's definitely gonna be filled with, that's definitely gonna be a seasonal rental, for sure.
Ay, ay, ay.
Yeah, at least, I thought that, I just, I was surprised by it being so, so like, I could understand it being, okay, let's do something smaller, but.
Bigger, this one's bigger.
But now they've, yeah, that's, that's a, that's big, well, much bigger than my house.
Yeah, eighteen hundred.
Because in your house, Joanne.
Yeah, sure is.
That's a big house.
Most, most houses in Kaplan Village are probably.
Yeah, yeah.
The Brooks are small, and they're half that size.
Yeah.
Nine hundred, a thousand square houses.
So I think the other, that's a good thing, is that we have inclusionary zoning, so that does allow us to work with the developers, set aside up to ten percent of the units in an affordable housing development for preference for low and moderate income veterans. Lots of times, we can do like seventy percent local preference on something, but that doesn't necessarily touch a veteran, per se, this is saying, okay, we wanna have a little bit carved out just for people who are qualified veterans, so that's something that we've been trying to get for a long time, is some veteran housing in, in town, so maybe this is something that, that might help us with that. There were some other, like, little changes in here related to making it harder for people to appeal things.
How about the quarter million dollar?
Yeah, and maybe having to put a bond up and, and that type of thing, that's not something that really changes our zoning too much, but it was in.
It certainly puts a damper on public participation.
It was in the advisory document by town council, to, to look at those types of things, so, so as I say, we're gonna like, take a, take a closer look at it over probably the next few months, and see what we need to do, and see how to set ourselves up for.
Any town that's gonna like, lead a revolt, like Milton led the revolt against the, the metro financing, that was, that was another governor's initiative where, and that was a, a really good case, because they took a little sliver of that, went right across case because they took a little sliver of that, went right across East Milton and they said, we don't, we're not even a metro town. And they said, no, even, and they said, no, we're not, and they said, we're not going to, are you going to give up the money? And they said, yeah. Not that this has got any money associated with it, but, but it's sort of like Jim's point, it was sort of trampling on local management.
That's exactly what it's doing, right there in a nutshell.
And these, and these are significant change, these are not just minor onesies, these are significant changes. Will change the character of our town if everyone jumped on board.
Well, there's a lot of other things that are going to restrict it, the zone two and the number of bedrooms, the flood plain and the expense of having to develop, you know, that.
That part didn't change, so.
Things didn't change.
There's still some protections.
There are still some protections, but it also, you know, we have a problem with our drinking water and our estuaries. And this is now just saying, well, we're not taking that into consideration. We're not saying this needs to be next to a sewer line or this needs to have a.
Sewer anywhere.
You know, an IA system or anything like that. It's just saying.
Do it.
If, if you can, if you can make Title V work, do it. So it's like one, one hand and the other hand are these two different, you know, areas are not speaking to each other. So it's housing, 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 and then it's like environment, nitrogen, 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 and they're not, they're not matching, so.
This goes back to my comment to the commission, that you've got to have one before you start creating the other. Otherwise you're going to create all this and then you've got nothing to support it. And that's where, exactly where we're heading right now. Because housing was like, you know, the buzzword, this is the buzzwords. Imagine if you turn on tonight's comments, they'll probably talk about the ability for housing. And it's a, it's a big issue, but you've got to have the infrastructure to be able to create the housing and that kind of getting that cart before the horse.
Also have to have the jobs to support the housing too, as Susan touched on. Without that, you're going to have some great empty houses, so.
Jobs drive everything.
Right.
If they, people will be employed with a decent wage, we can provide their housing for them to live in. Kathy, is there going to be any kind of opportunity for like public comment on, for example, the seasonal community notion and the changes? Is anyone planning any kind of a public hearing on the, on the governor's bill? The impact on the town or something like?
No, it's a done deal.
Yeah, this is over.
Yeah, but you should inform people.
At the select board level, Susan?
At any level, just to inform the people that this is now the law.
It feels like the select board should, should have some sort of discussion.
They should have it on there.
They had all the hearings, but nobody listened.
Right, but I mean, has, I don't.
I don't know why they call them hearings, because nobody was hearing.
Do we know if the select board has discussed this? Does anybody know?
No.
Do not believe it.
Did we send a letter?
It would be who?
We did send a letter to the state.
Assuming that the select board would have known that the planning board sent.
Nobody read it, Kathy.
I assume we had the town administrator, who certainly knows about this.
But the citizens know about it.
No, I, and I get it, I.
I think you're right, it should be on a select board agenda item.
Select.
What it feels like.
They should have, they should have like a Saturday, I don't know, open mic kind of thing where they invite people to, at least explain to people what, you know, what this means to them.
I, I think they, I'm surprised, well, it, it just, it did just happen, but I think we all sort of knew it was moving in this direction. I mean, the impact on town operations and town staff.
Irrelevant.
I mean.
They don't care, they didn't care.
No, no, I'm talking about how our town administrator.
We know that the state didn't care, Jim.
Need to think about what the implications are of this act on our town employee and their, and resources and the ability to, 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 to not break the law, if that's what we want to say.
What would happen if the, if we did say?
No.
We, exactly, we want more than, we want more than one required parking space or we want, what happens if the, what, what does, what would the state do to us?
That, that's a great question for town council.
Sanctuary town for parking.
Sanctuary town for parking. I mean, what would they do if we said, no, we absolutely want to have owner occupied? That, that was such a huge issue with us. That is.
That's what we define as reasonable.
Yeah, that's, and so what do they, what would they do to us?
Not to mention the special permit.
Besides arresting you, what else would they do to us?
Kathy's shaking her head.
Kathy would be in an orange jumpsuit.
How they always respond to that is by holding back funding for something.
It's called wastewater, to hold back the money that we need for that.
I think that's how the government gets states and towns to do things, is to basically say, fine, you play by our rules or we hold back funding on A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
It's the only leverage they really have.
Yeah.
They're not going to come down and lock up town hall, they're going to say.
They'll hold back funding.
I also think people would win. I mean, if, if you deny, if someone told someone that they had to have two parking spaces and they only provided one and you denied their permit, they would appeal to the zoning board of appeals who probably would say, no, you only have to do one, or if they, if they upheld it, then you'd go to superior.
And court, right.
Yeah, and, and then they would just say, of course.
Yeah, they're going to win.
They're going to win every single time. And then you might find that people start getting mad at the town administration.
And their argument is parking on their lawn means they don't have to mow as much.
That's true. I'm more concerned about the owner occupied. I think that's a bigger issue because that's a.
It's a huge issue.
I think economics are going to dictate a lot of that, too.
Yeah.
And what we got, how, how so?
Whether corporations start buying up all the properties.
He's already got two.
Kathy's already, Kathy's already under siege.
Yeah, we should know if the corporations or they're just some real estate guy who sends out a, I buy ugly houses.
Yeah, yeah, could be, could be, yeah.
So you, are you calling Joanne's house ugly?
No, no, I mean, that is one way to interpret it. It is one way to interpret.
Let the record indicate that I do not, I've never seen your house, I have no.
I'm always offended when they, when they do that to me. Like my house is.
On the cookie stroll, it's good enough to be on the cookie stroll. It's good, twice.
There you go.
I missed it then.
Not on the cookie stroll. Okay, Kath, what, anything else?
Would you ask, ask the board of, go, get the word to the board of selection, is there going to be any kind of public, like a Saturday morning special session or something where the, the impact of the governor's bill is going to be?
Agenda item on the select board.
I say this with peace and love, I think it's more likely that it'll become an agenda item at a Tuesday meeting coming soon.
As long as it's discussed.
But I don't believe it's going to have the kind of separate.
Attention.
Oomph that I think it may or may, may deserve. However, as February gets closer, we may see as town staff are busy interpreting and figuring out and they're reporting to the, to the town administrator at their weekly department meetings, I, I think we may, we may get there.
Well, even if it's just on the board of selection. We don't really know what it means to us yet.
Yeah.
We need to get to the point where we know what this means and how staff and town council are interpreting it for us. And we'll have a better picture. There, this is, this is all question marks.
Two weeks old.
This is two question marks.
Well, the ownership thing and the parking thing is pretty clear.
Sort of.
Yeah, but they, the stuff about the merging lots and all that, that's, you know, really interpretive and impactful.
That's effective immediately, actually.
The merging of lots, yeah. The way I read it, they could do it today.
If they understood it. I don't even understand what it says.
I don't think they understand it either, I agree there. I think the only part that's really undetermined is the seasonal designation, correct, Kathy? That's the only part left to be determined, whether the town Yamas is determined as a seasonal designation or not.
Do we even want it?
Right, or, and who makes that decision?
Right, or do we want it?
Even want it.
Who makes the decision and what is the process to respond to that decision or to be a part of that decision?
Like I say, it needed to be approved at town meeting.
It has to be approved, yeah. But how do we gauge the citizens', how do we gauge the citizens', do they want it or not? I mean, reading this, it certainly doesn't benefit us.
You're going to get more guidance documents coming from the state. They have that whole seasonal community, I forget what the group that they're putting together, they have to come up with rules and regulations, I think, within a certain time period. So more information is going to be developed.
Hopefully before February 2nd, so.
Certainly, most likely not. But certainly, your, your colleague in Dennis, for instance, will start getting stuff that we're not going to, that you're not going to get because of the designation. So I would assume that because you guys chat anyway at a, at a regional level, that maybe we could start to see from our friends in Dennis that do have the seasonal designation, well, what is it that the state is saying? And what is the timetable and who's enforcing it? And what do they, what are they telling Dennis to do?
We sort of like.
Maybe, something to think about.
I mean, we don't even know if the seasonal communities coordinating council has been established. Who, who is it?
And who's on it?
Who's on it?
They, they identify who needs to be on it. It's in there.
Oh, it is?
It's in there. Yeah. We get one Cape representative.
I'm talking about the people, they've identified.
Only one for the whole Cape?
Friends of the sitting governor, whatever that may be.
It's the executive office.
What do they talk about?
They have, they have very specific things that they need to accomplish and a lot of them is setting up their own governing rules and that type of thing, so.
Four of them are going to be appointed by the governor. One shall be from the western, one shall be from the northeast, one shall be from the southeast, and one shall be from the Cape. Well, who are these people? We don't.
Especially the Cape person.
Yeah, I was going to say, the Cape person, at least there's acknowledgement of the Cape and Islands, that's nice.
They'll be appointed by the governor.
Four people the governor likes, let's just put it that way, you know? That's really what it comes down to.
It's whoever the governor wants.
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
To that.
That's exactly who it is.
Anyway.
So more, more to come.
Yep. Moving along, since we, we do want to bring this to a close sometime soon.
Thank you.
LCP update.
We met with the CEDC on August 13th and we were fortunate that Mark Forrest was having an Affordable Housing Trust meeting there right before us, so he stayed and participated in the CEDC, which was very, which was very good. Some of the things, they, they, a lot of the members were really great, they provided, and I sent it off to you, that their comments in writing. But some of the things, I kind of highlighted a couple of things about, you know, easing the permitting process and the timeline, including with the Cape Cod Commission, because that's a whole nother thing to talk about. What I really wanted to know was identifying where the issues are with the permitting process, because lots of times it's really not our, some of it's our local regulations, people want more things out of our zoning per se. But a lot of the things are state regulations that we are required to enforce, the building code, the plumbing code, you know, the wetland regulations, the health codes. We're just, we're just following the rules that we have to do according to the state. And having gone through the Riverwalk Park project, it's like, it's the state, sorry, that where you get hung up because we, and maybe it's because I knew the local permitting so well, we went through the local permitting fairly quickly. It was the, the year for the Chapter 91 license, the whole MIPA, the, the environmental notification, the DRI that was required, that was years of permitting. Whereas we probably got through locals, you know, permitting in three to four months tops. We were two years just trying to get all this other stuff done. So understanding where people feel that, you hear it a lot, streamline permitting, what does that mean? Where are you getting snagged up and what could we even possibly do to help you? Because sometimes we can't, we can't help you. Really interested in hiring staff to assist applicants throughout the permitting process and really people to focus on economic development and attracting, actively attracting new businesses and also promoting the blue and green economies and drawing different types of, of people. Providing incentives, whether it's local, state or federal, for businesses to locate, expand or redevelop. Direct town involvement to acquire blighted properties for redevelopment. We have done that through the Affordable Housing Trust, where we purchased one of the Yarmouth Gardens and that was, ended up becoming affordable housing, but maybe it's some type of redevelopment corporation that gets done in order to, to make that be more proactive on the town level. And obviously improving aesthetics of the, of the commercial corridor and then utilizing our Cape Cod rail trail, trailheads to spur business opportunities. Lots of stuff going on in Station Avenue there. More workforce in seasonal housing, but trying to identify how much of a gap there is in the seasonal housing. We have existing seasonal housing bylaw, how much of that is actually working? And so what's the gap that we might need to expand, expand upon? We want to expand mixed use zoning opportunities, I think that's been something that we've consistently been hearing, even amongst ourselves, and ways for, to help businesses build their own workforce housing. Maybe it's something that's in the back of their business or something along those lines. Better coordinations with the businesses during the wastewater construction. This is going to go on for a long time, making sure that people are aware that these businesses are still open, even if something's a detour, you can still get down to these businesses and keeping them open and keeping them informed of the construction schedule. Infrastructure, I don't think any of this was surprising, wastewater, broadband, the Mattakees redevelopment, I mean, that's going to be a big infrastructure, the Riverwalk Park, libraries, educational facilities, recreational facilities, and then seeing some type of downtown area or Main Street development, that might be something, that's one thing that Yarmouth really lacks.
Kathy, any update on the Mattakees committee that they're setting up? Have they made any?
My understanding is that they were supposed to be doing something about that on an agenda in September. Bill Scott is back, he came back this week.
That's good, that was my.
Yep, so.
He is the man when it comes to this.
He is the man and he's, but he's heavy into capital budget right now. But, yeah.
He is the spearhead.
He is the spearhead and, and I think he was talking about having, working up some type of scope to, to move that forward and hiring the consultant to help, kind of with that starting from scratch, which is what the select board was looking to do.
I'm sorry, I thought it was very clear that there were four or five different options that this Mattakees committee was going to operate under and not start from scratch.
That's what I believe Bill Scott proposed to the select board, but my understanding was that they wanted to start a little bit further back and not come with.
I would just say to my two colleagues on this panel that have put their names in, please take that information under advisement before you choose to spend your time. I say that respectfully.
It's the box that says other, that ends up.
It could be more time consuming if you.
That could be a year.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
That one decision could be a year.
Really? Yeah.
Well, I just, I just wanted to clarify it because that was what I was actually kind of reasonably excited about, was that Mr. Scott had taken the time.
Given the framework.
About the four or five pathways to say, we don't have to start at zero, we can start at 22.
Right.
Out of 100. And that makes a humongous difference.
Set the framework.
In terms of wheel spinning and navel gazing, which is not what this town needs, because the Mattakees property is two years behind where it should be. Sorry, Madam Chair, I will get off my soapbox that you can't see.
It's terrible. So, you know, obviously tapping into the state funds through the Mass Leeds Act and the Housing Bond Bill for funding opportunities for infrastructure and housing. So a lot of these bills come, may come with some rules, but they also come with some money. So let's make sure that we can get some of our, our share of that. They, we did ask that question about what CEDC might want to see at Mattakees, getting back to Mattakees. They, they wanted to see the use committee established very quickly. And then talking about adjusting zoning, looking at event spaces or a theater, a cultural arts center, co-work space for remote or hybrid workers, mixed use with housing, retail, professional and community space or recreational facilities. So they provided some.
That's all over the map right there, so.
And then, and nothing in there about education, because there is a elementary school there, you know, that either it's being relocated somewhere else or it's being rebuilt right there somewhere.
It has to be considered.
I understand your frustration with that whole process, but the fact that an individual I understand your frustration with that whole process, but the fact that an individual has selected A, B, C, and D doesn't mean that A, B, C, and D are correct. And I think that's the approach that some are taking, is wait a minute. You think these, but don't we need to look at C?
I totally, I don't disagree with you, but it was after, I believe, months of work internally to, to get, to just, to get the thing going.
Oh, don't misunderstand. This should have been done, I'm in agreement with you. Once they decided to build the new.
You're saying the perspective, you're repeating.
The second we voted to, to build the new school, that committee should have been created the next day.
If they get shutted, it should have been started.
Didn't even need to be shutted. You knew it was going to shut, so move on.
And I think A, B, C, and D encompass virtually anything you could possibly put on there.
Pretty broad category.
I mean, it was very broad.
There's an entertainment one, there's a recreation one, there's an education one, and then there's the commercial one. Well, okay, those are four pretty broad buckets. Let's start the committee.
And you can tack virtually anything under one of those umbrellas.
Exactly.
Even the Las Vegas idea.
Welcome to.
Town of Yarmouth.
Yes.
One of the things that, that was mentioned by CEDC members, but really emphasized by Mark Forrest, was really promoting our history and heritage tourism. I guess it's very big in Quincy, and then ensuring that we're preserving our historic buildings and areas and having that be a draw. Looking for more types of businesses and events for young people, more year-round recreation, more effective communication specifically related to when there's an emergency, constructions and events that are going on around town. My question to people was, how do you get your information? How do you want to be getting your information? That's the, the issue, because there's a lot of information out there, but if you're not seeing it, it means it's not the format that you want it in.
It's usually rumor.
Well, Mr. Saban made a point earlier about the purchase of the, of the bricks and how easy or not easy it was. And I can just say, as somebody that uses my phone a little more than the average bear, let's say, as a 51-year-old, the fact that when you see an alert from the town of Yarmouth, that I actually get a text alert, and I click on it, and I'm using my phone, and when I finally click on it, I can't actually read it. I cannot actually, the, the website on your, the town's website on our phones is not optimized for mobile use. It makes no sense. So even when I turn my phone sideways, it's cut off. So I can only read this much of the fact that Long Pond and Forest Road are actually closed, as opposed to, gosh, it's 2024. Maybe the town of Yarmouth's new communication director, who I believe is doing a very good job, should help us optimize the website and the alerts that we get from our town about what the heck is going on. Because the majority of, sorry, a lot of people, Madam Chair, absorb their information on a mobile device, whether it's an iPad or an iPhone or an Android device. And the fact that you can't read an alert, even about Chairman Stone's funeral, which I got an alert about, I had to click four or five different buttons just to read about when the funeral was and where. Because on a mobile device, our town website stinks.
Well, I think our website does completely does. But to what you're saying, we can send out a telephone message that's a rhyme about all kinds of other things, but we can't send one out that says, hey, stay off of Forest Road tomorrow.
And flames.
Maybe if, maybe if we get somebody to do it in rhyme, then they'll be more willing to go on and send those, but.
So.
Kathy, keep going.
Continue. Things like more EV charging stations in town and grant applications for climate resiliency, and they're also talking about maybe some additional bus shelters along the, the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority route along Route 28. I think you need to identify where the clusters are, because it is a flag down. You could have a bench the entire way.
It's so 1950s. Run out to, and the bus stops. It's just un, and the traffic picks up instant. And it's usually someone with a bike.
And you're late for an appointment.
So the last question we kind of asked for people was, what did you want us to take away? And people were saying, hire staff to focus, focus on economic development, grants completing existing studies and streamlining permitting, including timeline, rezoning, and private-public partnerships to drive development and economic growth, strengthen ties with educational institutions for skilled workforce, and effectively implement the LCP action items. LCP offers our opportunity to shape the future of our community and learn from our history, develop a downtown area that becomes a destination, and question mark whether that could be around the Riverwalk Park, and part, that would really need to be some type of partnership between the town and, and businesses and developers. And then just do a better job to get the word out about all the things the town does do for his, for its residents. I know that when you, even at the CEDC meeting, you know, Peter Slove said, well, there's a bunch of things that we do do with zoning, and he'd listed a bunch of stuff. And I think people weren't fully aware of that. So I think when people say, we need more mixed use, well, tell me, what mix do we allow right now on Route 28? And you probably would get, none. No, we, we, we do have a lot of different opportunities. Yarmouth Commons was completely by right, completely by right with our current zoning. So we do have a lot of opportunities. We obviously can always do better and expand, but we do have a lot of things going on. So the, the finance committee interview is set for next Wednesday, August 28th, I believe it is, at 6:00 PM. And I'll give out the notification for anyone that can come. I'm going to be there. Joanne's going to be there. And then Jeff.
Where is that going to take place?
Jeff Baggs. I think it'll happen in, in Conference Room A.
It's their regularly scheduled meeting.
Got it.
Yeah. I think we, it's a one agenda. It's, it's just us and all the items that we would like to get their input on. I think it's going to be a very interesting conversation. Bunch of smart people there who've thought about a lot of different things, so it could be very interesting. And then I also want to emphasize that the community open house meeting has been scheduled for the senior center for September, Thursday, September 26th at 6:00 PM. We'll be talking, obviously, more about the formatting for that and that type of thing as we get a little bit closer. And I need to start getting out notifications for, the hub is up for people to start putting, mapping some ideas, doing some of the crowdsourcing, map identifying, thumb up and thumb down on some things. I did go ahead and populate some things based on, as a resident, some of my concerns, but also as town planner from things that I heard during the visioning process. And you can certainly go in and add your, your comments as well. So I'll be doing some more publicity on that. And then a little later, as we get closer to the community meeting, we'll do be more publicity with regard to that. I do need to start working on scheduling more of the other meetings, the, the capital budget committee. Now that Bill Scott's back, he's trying to coordinate that and set up a meeting with them. But then there's a bunch of, a whole laundry list of other people we are trying to, to get in touch with. So I'm going to start seeing if we can't get those in order and start scheduling those meetings. So lots going on.
Next on our agenda are meeting minutes. May I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of July 17th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Committee updates. Anyone have committee updates?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Saban.
So the, to be named in the future park, boardwalk planks are now available to be purchased. I find it extremely difficult process myself, and I, talking about our town's website, wouldn't it be nice if there's just a little picture of a boardwalk that you could click on and go right to something that we're able to, anyway. You can do it. It's a little bit more difficult than I thought it should be, but it kind of goes to some of the PR things that we talk about, you know, and all the wonderful things that are going on in town. If you're listening out there in town and planning land and who makes these decisions, social media really works really well. There's a group, Friends of Yarmouth, that I see some, lots of conversation about things that are going on in town. And so there are some ways that we can get the words out. The things that are going on at the, at the to be named park are really cool, but none of us know what's going on, except everybody asks us, hey, what's going on over there? Just another example. So anyway, you can buy your, your boardwalk planks, 24 characters. The symbols come for three. But anyway, you can go on and find that. That's the key thing I have for right now, except that, yeah, that's it.
Okay, expand on that?
Yep.
If you go to yarmouth MA.us/planks.
Oh.
And you're not going to, you're absolutely right. The website is not formatted for mobile devices.
On a phone or an iPad, forget it.
But it's yarmouth MA.
I believe that that exists. It just doesn't, it looks terrible, and it's very hard to use.
It's not mobile format.
On a mobile device.
I agree. So, but it's yarmouth.
Before.
It's yarmouth MA.us/planks.
Cool.
And that will give you the link on how to do it. And there's also, you go down at the bottom, if you want detailed instructions on how to do it, you click here. We already have 11 people have signed up for their planks. Please keep it to 24 characters. That's very clearly identified in the, in the form.
No exceptions.
If it goes to 25, I might just let it go if it's something, but.
We won't.
We can't.
Don't even say that.
We can't.
Don't say that.
I've been, I spent most of my time today telling people that they've exceeded the 24. So it.
That's why if there's a little block with 24 spaces, then they know. You've got to fill it in with these spaces.
Then someone needs to manually take that information and put it into a spreadsheet to send it to the engraver so that they have that information.
No, no, no. I mean on the application. If the application has 24 spaces.
I agree with you. I agree with you, but there's limitations to all of these open gov, any type of, of formatted type of program. There are limitations, and that's one of the limitations. The nice thing is I get a spreadsheet, an Excel spreadsheet of everything that identifies the icon, the message, and then the other icon that people can use. And then that just goes to the.
Can you please remind us what the deadline is?
There's no deadline.
When we sell out 1,600 plus planks.
Sorry, I was just trying to artificially create some momentum, if you will.
Do it now.
There is a.
Now that you said there's no deadline, well, I'm just going to chillax over here with my phone, with my, with my non-mobile, non-mobile optimized web.
I'm that well.
He's not wrong. I know exactly what you're talking about. There is, there are included, there, you're absolutely right. There is a little bit. There's 200 planks that are included right now in the contract with Robert B. Hour. So if you're the first 200, you're guaranteed to get it done as part of this construction. If more come in and we can get them to do more of them as part of the construction better, but otherwise, you might have to wait longer, because it would need, be done later when DPW would then be responsible for doing certain batches of them. So the more we can get done.
Okay.
As part of this, the, the better off we are. And then all that, all those funds do go into a special account that's for the construction operation maintenance of the Riverwalk Park.
Or to be named later.
Yeah, I just, I want to mention the naming. It's going to be, I believe, on the September 10th, select board agenda, the naming, the formal naming of the park.
Until then, we can call it TBD.
They do all these things when I'm not around. You notice that?
Don't take it personally.
I don't. It's, I, for understatement.
Any other committee com, notes? Okay. Kathy, any correspondence or staff updates you need to bring our way?
Yeah, the only update is kind of piggybacking off what Christie was saying, is that we did have a meeting today with the Cape Cod Commission. It was a lot of planners, a lot of building officials to talk about. They've hired a consultant to develop architectural plans for things like ADUs, small townhouse-type projects, up to 12-unit apartments. The idea is that for a certain number of them, they would have some pre, pre-designed, prepaid for architectural plans, full, full building permit applicable plans that people could use in order to create a detached, like an ADU or something along, something. So it wouldn't be a case where, oh, it's a lost. I don't know what to do. I don't know what it looks like, and you have to work with an architect. You have to find one. You still need to hire a, a civil engineer. You still need a site plan. You still need to deal with your septic. But it takes one thing off.
Who's doing that, Kathy?
The commission's doing it. They have a grant to do it, and they've hired.
Really cool.
That's really great.
Yeah. So it, we started today to kind of identify some of the concerns and issues. Again, they kept talking about streamlining permitting. We're like, it's not really going to streamline permitting, because it's not going to, it doesn't take the building department that long to look at a set of plans. It's going to save a lot of money.
Yeah.
For someone who wants to develop an ADU. And then I was asking, go, well, can you, you know, make them expandable? Because maybe somebody wants a smaller one, because you got to hit the 50%. But then if they can have a larger one, you add the bedroom here. And then it's just like, you add the bedroom. So they're working on.
Local architects are loving this.
What's that? What's that?
Local architects are loving this.
Yeah. Well, I think they're so busy that they're like, they can't even get to smaller projects like this. So that becomes a problem. So that, very interesting. We're just kind of starting that, and they're hoping to have, really, it done by the end of the year. They're going to have a whole guidance document that also goes along with it, which will take longer. Like, this is not your last stop of these model designs. You have to go through all these other things you need to consider when permitting.
Good timing for February 2nd, Madam Chair. Have all these plans at the ready, for those that wish to take advantage of it.
Yeah. Anything else, Kathy? Okay. Next meetings.
Oh, yes. We have lots.
Kind of outlined a bunch of them.
Yes. So the next meeting, in addition to having the articles written for the zoning changes, the pump station number three, which is located at the front of the Riverwalk Park, they've made some, they weren't quite as far along as the rest of the park, but they, they did contribute and put in a design for a building that went through us, through the VCOD site plan review. Now they make, want to make some changes. I think they did a good job trying to make the building look similar, even though it's smaller and that type of thing. So we're going through Design Review Committee tomorrow at 4:00. Yeah, we should probably touch base ahead of that for your first meeting, so you can know how that runs. And then hopefully, that'll be on September 4th, so that'll keep it going. I think they did go out to bid, but they need to have the permits before they, they'd like to have all the permits before they open the bids. And again, it's that deadline of October 31st of having things awarded that is kind of really dictating some of that. The National Night Out, where we're planning on having a table for the local comprehensive plan, has been modified to Saturday, September 7th, I believe, from 10 to 1. So it's on, it's not a night out, it's a morning.
It's a day out.
It's a brunch.
So I think that would be something, you know, if other people want to participate, I'm going to go and, and just, we'll have a bunch of information to hand out and kind of get people hopefully jazzed for the upcoming community meeting that we'll be having later that month. September 18th is a regular meeting, nothing that I know of right now. And then, again, September 26th is the community open house at 6:00 PM at the senior center. And then October 7th is our, or 2nd, excuse me, is our regular meeting, and that would be the tentative public hearing on zoning amendments. The only thing not in here is the August 28th FinCon meeting, but we talked about that earlier.
Kathy, for the September 26th open house meeting, would it be possible for you to have ready for us to just take a look, or you just send us via email? It doesn't have to necessarily be at the September 18th meeting, kind of the agenda for that and how we want to.
Yep.
I presume the consultants will be there.
Yeah, they're working on the format for it.
Great.
And I think they did want to have it be a little bit more open house, so we might have more tables, and each of us will kind of like man a table. So we definitely need to have more information on what's expected of all, of all of us and how it's going to run, and they're working on that.
Okay, good. It'll be here before we know it. It will be here before we know it.
So will the zoning amendment hearings?
Yes. Okay. Any, anything else on meetings, Kathy?
Nope.